Good afternoon and welcome to the National Capital Planning Commission's April 1st, 2021 Public Meeting. First item, Ms. Costa, could you please take the roll call?
Thank you. Commissioner Trubull?
Here.
Commissioner McMahon?
I'm here.
Thank you. Commissioner May?
Here.
Commissioner Argo?
Here.
Thank you. Vice Chairman White?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Dixon?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Cash?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Thank you. And Commissioner Davenport?
Here.
Thank you. I would note that Marcel Acosta, the Executive Director, Anne Skyler, General Counsel, and Diane Sullivan, the Director of the Urban Design and Plan Review Division, are also in the meeting.
Thank you. Noting the presence of a quorum, I'd like to call this meeting to order. At an earlier executive session today, the Commission elected me to run today's meeting, and this meeting is livestreamed and will be available in a few days as a video on NCPC's website. If there is no objection, the agenda is adopted as the order of business. We will now play a short video clip of the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic with righteous hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would also like to take a moment to pause for a moment of silence for all of those affected by COVID-19 in our nation and around the world. In response to the COVID-19 guidance on public meetings, NCPC will conduct its public meetings online until circumstances change. I want to share how we will be conducting Commission business. Votes by the Commission will be conducted by roll call. When Commissioners wish to be recognized, they should unmute, turn on their webcams, and request to be recognized. During Commission deliberations, I will use a round robin format to ask each Commissioner if they have questions or comments. During deliberations, all Commissioners should be on video during that time unless you are experiencing technical issues. When you wish to put forward a motion, a second, or an amendment, please unmute, identify yourself, and make the motion. The next two agenda items are procedural. Our bylaws specify that in April of each year, the Commission elects a new Vice Chair and the other members of the Executive Committee. So while we have recently taken similar actions, we are doing so again. I note that Commissioners Dixon and May are willing to continue to serve on the Executive Committee, and I would also be pleased to continue as Vice Chair. With that in mind, is there a motion to elect a Vice Chair of the Commission?
This is Commissioner McMahon. I nominate Ms. White for the role of Deputy Commissioner, Vice Commissioner.
A motion that I will serve as Vice Chair has been moved and seconded. Ms. Costa, can you please take the vote by roll call? And Commissioners, please say yes, no, or abstain.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon made the motion, and I believe Commissioner Wright among the chorus made the second. So Commissioner Trubull?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Abstain.
Thank you. Commissioner Davenport?
Abstain.
Thank you. Two abstentions, all the rest affirmative.
Well, thank you for that vote of confidence, and I look forward to continuing to serve the Commission. Next, is there a motion to elect two Commissioners to serve on the Executive Committee?
I'd like to make that motion, Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
I move that Commissioner Dixon and Commissioner May serve on the Executive Committee for the coming year.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second. This is Commissioner Wright.
A motion that Commissioners Dixon and May will serve on the Executive Committee has been moved and seconded. Ms. Costa, can you please take the vote by roll call?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Trubull?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Vice Chairman White?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Abstain.
Commissioner Davenport?
Abstain.
Thank you. Two abstentions, all the rest in the affirmative.
Thank you, Commissioner May and Commissioner Arrington Dixon for agreeing to serve. I look forward to serving with you. With that, we will move to Agenda Item 4, which is the Report of the Vice Chair. And I wanted to share that Senator Gary Peters, Chairman of the Committee on Homeland Security and Government Affairs, has informed me of his designated alternates to represent him on the Commission. Lena Chang, Governmental Affairs Director and Senior Counsel is first alternate, and Chelsea Davis, professional staff member, is second alternate. Ms. Davis, I want to welcome you and Ms. Chang to the Commission. Also, Colin Davenport, an alternate for Congresswoman Maloney, is joining us today for the first time. So welcome to you as well, Mr. Davenport.
Thank you.
Thank you both. So Agenda Item 5 is the Report of the Executive Director, Mr. Acosta.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Working with our interagency stakeholders, we've been making great progress on developing Pennsylvania Avenue concept alternatives. We do plan to provide an informational briefing on the Pennsylvania Avenue Initiative to the full Commission at our June meeting. I would also like to take this opportunity to acknowledge that it's been a year since we started holding virtual Commission meetings due to the pandemic. Many thanks to Commission members, our applicants, and members of the public for your willingness to adapt to our virtual meeting format over the last year. Finally, I'd like to recognize the entire NCPC staff for their outstanding work to ensure that we are successfully able to continue our mission. If you do have my written report in your packets, I'm happy to answer any question that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Acosta. And I would like to add sincere thanks to the staff for making this possible and making it work so smoothly. It's not an easy way to work, but I can say you haven't missed a beat, and we appreciate that and the flexibility. Are there any questions of Mr. Acosta? Great, thank you. I'd also like to thank the Commission members for making this work and the public, because it's an interesting way to have these meetings, to be sure. So Agenda Item Number 6 is the Legislative Update. Ms. Skyler?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chairperson. I have nothing to report. There's been no significant movement on any of the legislation that I'm tracking.
Thank you for that update. Any questions for Ms. Skyler?
Madam Chair, I would just like to pick up on your earlier comment and express my appreciation and for the staff bringing the Commissioners into a new era with the computer usage that we've had, because I think we all have picked up things that are going to be useful for us in other meetings in other ways. So it's sort of been pushed us into a learning curve, and I think that's been healthy, very healthy. Thank you.
Those are very true comments. Thank you for sharing those. Agenda Item 7 is the Consent Calendar. There are two Consent Calendar items on this month's agenda. The first is for approval of preliminary site and building plans for the Humphreys Engineers Center Maintenance and Supply Facility submitted by the United States Department of Defense, Army Corps of Engineers. The second is for a text amendment to subtitles A through K, U, and X, modifications and clarifications to penthouse and rooftop structure regulations submitted by the Zoning Commission of the District of Columbia. Are there any questions regarding the Consent Calendar items? And we do have people available from the Humphreys Engineers Center Maintenance and Supply Facility and the Army Corps of Engineers available, should anyone have any questions. Hearing no questions, is there a motion to approve the Consent Calendar items?
So moved.
That's my role today. I'm the secondor-in-chief.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Ms. Costa, can you please confirm the motion and the second, and take the vote by roll call?
You bet. Commissioner May made the motion, and Commissioner Wright chimed in with the second. Thank you. Commissioner Trubull?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Vice Chairman White?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Abstain.
And Commissioner Davenport?
Abstain.
Thank you. Two abstentions, the rest in the affirmative.
Thank you. So first on the open session is Agenda Item 8A, to approve comments on concept plans for the Bureau of Engraving and Printing Currency Production Facility. And to present is Mr. Hart. Welcome, Mr. Hart.
Thank you. I hope you can hear me. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, I can.
That's fine. Thank you. I just wanted to double-check. Good afternoon, Commissioners. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, on behalf of the Bureau of Engraving and Printing, which is part of the Treasury Department, has submitted concept design plans for a new currency production facility to be constructed on land that was once part of the Beltsville Agricultural Research Center in Prince George's County, Maryland. As you may recall, the Army Corps, the BEP, Bureau of Engraving and Printing, and their consultant team provided an information presentation at the meeting in this past February. In this presentation, I'll summarize the information that they provided, as well as describe the staff's analysis of the project. So at Concept Review, the Commission is focused on a few concerns. Among them, whether the project is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and NCPC policies and plans. And you can see a few of the concerns listed here. Also, is the project site appropriate, given the site context? And are there any particular unique and/or complex issues? Here is a timeline for the project. We had the information presentation in February. We are now at Concept Review. In the fall, the applicant will submit the preliminary design, and the final design is anticipated for submission next year. So you heard the information presentation in February, but I thought it would be helpful to review some of the information. You see the Washington, D.C. production facility, an older photograph that's shown here. It was built in 1914 and has been in operation for more than 100 years. This image is, again, the main BEP building downtown. As BEP's currency production has modernized and added more complex processes and security features, the existing facilities are no longer able to support an efficient, secure, and innovative manufacturing process. BEP noted in February that there are a number of deficiencies that they are trying to address with this new facility, and these include building inefficiencies, health and safety concerns, as well as security issues. I'm not going to go into depth of these again, but wanted to remind you of the reasons for the facility. There are only two currency production facilities in the United States. The one that's located here in downtown Washington and the Western Currency Facility in Fort Worth, Texas. You can see that here on the right-hand portion of the slide. The Government Accountability Office conducted a study in 2018 exploring the idea of renovating the existing facility or constructing a new facility. In that 2018 report, GAO noted a new production facility would be less expensive and better address BEP's need for secure, efficient, and flexible currency production than a renovation of its Washington, D.C. facility. BEP notes that there is a need for a secure perimeter and there is a greater production efficiency on a single floor, neither of which can be offered downtown. BEP developed the site selection criteria, which is shown here on the left-hand portion of the slide. I'll focus on the third bullet, which says that it needs to be located within a 30-mile radius of the current downtown facility. And this is really because the employees that work at this facility are fairly specialized, and it takes years for them to attain the required mastery of the production process. And so moving that would be a difficulty, and replacing those staff would be a difficulty. Access to a major interstate highway within 10 miles is also one of the criteria, as is locating near a major airport. BEP has been exploring or replacing or renovating the existing facility for two decades. While BEP explored both public and privately-held sites, BEP sought publicly-owned sites, and they include the Beltsville Agricultural Research Center, the NASA Goddard Campus, the RFK Stadium Site, property at the FDA Wythe Campus, and the GSA Springfield Warehouse Site, to name a few. You can see some of these sites are actually identified here that are privately-owned and publicly-owned. BEP stated that the only site that met the criteria and was available for transfer is this parcel at the Beltsville Agricultural Research Center, or BARC. So staff notes that we understand this is a unique situation, and requirements for this program make it difficult to identify suitable locations in the national capital region. While staff acknowledges this site is surrounded by agricultural area, this site does have an existing infrastructure from the abandoned poultry testing facilities that exist there now. It meets the site selection criteria. It is federally-owned property, and I'll note here that this being a federal facility or federal land is something that is actually supported by the Comprehensive Plan policies. And the site was made available for transfer by Congress from the USDA to the Treasury Department. Staff is generally supportive of the site. However, we have concerns which are focused on several areas. They are transportation, the environment, historic preservation, and site improvements, and I'll be describing these later in the presentation. So where is the site located? These next few slides are intended to orient you to the site. The facility is relocated on a 100-acre existing site in an unincorporated part of Prince George's County. The closest town is Beltsville, next to the west. You see that kind of blinking there. You'll also note that Greenville, the city of Greenville, is actually south of the site, about 2 miles, and north of the site is South Laurel. And I understand this map is somewhat confusing, or a lot of things going on, but it's really intended to demonstrate that there are a number of federal facilities in this area which are identified on this map. So this facility is being placed in an area that already has a federal presence. These are the transportation facilities in the immediate vicinity of the site, and they include the Greenville Metro Station in I-495, which are to the south, the I-95 and Route 1 corridor, which are actually to the west, and then the Baltimore/Washington Parkway, which is National Park Service property, and that's located to the east of the site. And for a finer grain look at the site, we have Powdermill Road, which is due south of the property. North of the property is Odell Road, and then to the west is Edmiston Road. I'll also point out Vansville Neighborhood, which is directly north of the property, and then Beltsville, you can see here, which is just due west. The next few slides will show some landforms, land uses, and natural resources. This landform topography slide demonstrates the topographic changes on the site. We have a plateau area that's in the central and northern portion of the site. And then there's a southern portion, southeast portion, there's a bowl or a kind of a depression that's located there. There are a few ridges and things that are rolling hills that are also off the site but are nearby. You can see the land uses with the site within a mile of the facility. Again, there's agricultural and institutional to the south and to the west. To the east is a forested area. North is a residential community, and farther to the west is this commercial area, and that's along Route 1. For natural resources, there are some wetlands on the site. As I noted, there's also a forested area to the east and a conservation forested area that's actually to the north. And then southern portion of the site is a wet meadow area, a wetland, and an intermittent stream that's here on the very southern portion of the site. There's another intermittent stream along Powdermill Road, which is where the main access road will intersect with Powdermill. And then just a few images of the existing site. This is looking towards the site, looking at some of the cropland and some of the forested, excuse me, the fields that are there, the wet meadow, as well as some rolling terrain with cops of trees. And finally, an aerial of the site. This is, of course, taken during winter. This view is actually looking north. This is Poultry Road, which is the main road that you've seen on the plans. And then Odell Road is actually to the north here, and then the Vansville Neighborhood is due north of this. And you also note some of the existing buildings that are on the site. These are part of the historic district, and the buildings will need to be removed as part of the project. I'll be discussing that later in the presentation. So the Army Corps conducted an analysis to determine the layout of the building, and the explored three options, which are shown here. Each of these layouts needed to include the following functions: a manufacturing hall, this orange area, this is where the currency will be produced; an administrative function, this light blue area, which is really to support the currency production; the central utility plant, which I think is self-explanatory; the supply chain or the warehouse. This is actually being consolidated from a leased space, which is located in Lanham, Maryland currently, and that's this kind of peach color that's here. And finally, the Federal Reserve Vault, which is shown here on the image. This process led to the identification of Scheme C, or the scheme on the right-hand side, as the preferred scheme. So here's the proposed layout for the building. It includes the elements I noted in the previous slide. I'll also note that there will be a loading area on the north side of the building connected to the warehouse and the vault, with these indicated here. This loading area is, the location of this area, this loading area, is a result of where the Federal Reserve Vault and the warehouse are, because these are where most of the deliveries will be intended for. Again, there are surface parking lots to the east and to the south. There is an existing, excuse me, there will be a proposed entrance, which is shown here, the perspective rendering showing that here on the right. And then there will be a road that'll go up to the north. This is actually an emergency exit. It's not going to be used regularly by the employees on the site. So staff analysis is focused on several areas. I noted this earlier. These are transportation, the environment, site improvements, and the historic preservation. The staff recommendations will be integrated into the discussion about the project design. So the building itself will be 960 feet by 960 feet for an area of just under a million square feet. The height of the building will vary between 40 and 50 feet. As you can see on the site plan, the building will also incorporate a green roof on 50% of the roof, with the remainder of the roof being a solar panels or photovoltaic system. Other site elements include surface parking on the east and south. They'll be incorporating low-impact development measures. There'll be a walking pathway on the eastern side of the site for employees, and then a perimeter fencing around the entire site. The site also includes three buildings on the south of the site. This is actually the main entrance for vehicles, and this will consist of a building, excuse me, a truck screening building, a staff screening building, and then a visitor screening building. There's also a building that's to the north, which will be a guard booth. The Army Corps notes that the total building energy need is estimated at 48,000 megawatt-hours per year. Rooftop solar votaic system, which is shown here, is estimated to provide 18% of the building's total energy needs. One interesting fact is that the solar panels are estimated to provide 101% of the non-production-related energy needs. So everything else, other than the production area, will get its energy from this solar array. And so, as you can see in this comparison provided by the applicant, there will be a reduction of the metric tons of carbon dioxide with the new facility as opposed to the existing facilities. The new facility is estimated at about 55% or 53% of that, which is being measured at the Fort Worth, Texas facility, which is a definite reduction. Regarding the parking ratio, there'll be 1,427 and 30s assigned to the facility, spread over three shifts. This is a 24-hour facility. You can see the shift hours here on the left. The Army Corps is proposing 1,234 parking spaces on the surface parking lots. Of these spaces, 1,184 will be for employees, and 50 will be for visitors and VIPs. There will be an effective parking ratio of 1 to 1.1 for the site. And I'll note that this is not consistent with the Comprehensive Plan, which indicates this installation should have a 1 to 2 parking ratio. The BEP is requesting a waiver for the parking ratio. So they have provided some justification for requesting this waiver, and that is shown here. They note that there are constraints with using metro, there's rigid production shift hours, and the distribution of staff and the reason is that rationale. With regard to using metro for commuting, BEP notes the distance to metro, the lack of pedestrian or bike amenities, and the operating hours make it difficult to rely on metro. They also note that the production shift hours are set by employee unions and not easily changed. And if employees are late to their posts, this would result in having to stop their production, which would create waste, which increase the overall cost of producing currency. And finally, BEP described the distribution of the staff as being from southern Prince George's County and from Charles County in Maryland, and then in Virginia and the Stafford area. And they note that commuting via metro is not convenient for staff, as shifts don't overlap well with the metro's operating hours. So while staff understands that BEP has provided some justification for requesting the parking ratio waiver, we don't believe that there has been sufficient information for us to make a recommendation to the Commission. In addition, a transportation management plan would provide additional information on this. However, TMPs are not required until preliminary review, which, as I noted earlier, is expected this fall. And so therefore, we recommend that the Commission require the Army Corps to provide the following information with the TMP: specific justification describing what a typical WAMADA commute would be for the production staff from Virginia and Maryland, and why this is not feasible; an explanation of why the shift hours are difficult to adjust to better accommodate commuting by WAMADA; a description of the USDA Shuttle Program. There is a shuttle that USDA has between the Greenville Metro and the BARC campus, and it would be helpful to understand how the addition of the BEP facility will impact the shuttle program. And then finally, as part of the TMP strategies, to minimize the single occupancy vehicle mode split, which by using things like carpooling, ride chair, or additional shuttles. Also with regard to surface parking, the BEP is proposing a enhanced surface parking lot, which incorporate a number of low-impact development measures. These measures are identified here on the bullets on the left. Staff noted to BEP that surface parking is not consistent with the transportation element of the Comprehensive Plan, which focuses on structured parking. And staff notes a structured parking option was being considered last year. It was somewhat of a terraced, kind of partially underground, structured parking. However, the Army Corps stated it determined the surface parking was environmentally actually better, and there were other issues, such as poor soil conditions, there were the possibility of U-Shit impacts of an above-grade parking structure. And then there was an analysis that was provided by the consultant for BEP that described embodied carbon or greenhouse gas emissions would be greater with structured parking. And I'll note that embodied carbon is a relatively new term. It's defined by the World Green Building Council as embodied carbon or greenhouse gas emissions would be greater with structured parking. And I'll note that embodied carbon is a relatively new term. It's defined by the World Green Building Council as "carbon emissions associated with materials and construction processes throughout the whole life cycle of a building or infrastructure." So while staff is still evaluating this embodied carbon rationale, the idea that structured parking, in this instance, is more potentially, is potentially more environmentally impactful than compact development and the efficient use of land, this seems somewhat counter to what we typically see. The transportation element includes the structured parking policy to promote compact development and allow space for future uses. So we find it, we just think that it's important to clearly understand the trade-offs if surface parking is to be placed here. So staff finds that the proposed surface lot conflicts with the comprehensive plan policy, that placing parking in structures, preferably below ground in the interest of efficient land use and good urban design, notes that the preliminary objectives, excuse me, the primary objectives of efficient land use and good urban design is minimal impact to the environment. Notes that the BEP recently completed an in-depth environmental analysis in evaluating the embodied carbon or greenhouse gas emissions for different parking alternatives for the site, and believes that the proposed surface parking design is the least impactful and best solution. And since staff was only recently made aware of this analysis, we feel it would be helpful for the commission to hear this prior to the project being submitted in the fall. And so, we're requesting that the US Army Corps of Engineers brief the commission before preliminary review on the status of the TMP and addressing the comprehensive plan's 1 to 2 parking ratio, as well as the analysis that shows how the proposed design for surface parking is better environmentally than the structured or underground parking. So the Army Corps also conducted a transportation impact study last year, which analyzed impacts to 15 intersections. They're identified on this map here. The site is shown here in yellow. And it included those intersections that would have a failing level of service as a result of this project. And these failing intersections are identified here with the red circles. Three of the intersections are at the Baltimore-Washington Parkway and Powder Mill intersection. Three others are along Edmiston Road, which is to the west. And then, one is actually at the intersection between the Powder Mill Road and the access road going to the new facility. These intersections would be the most impacted, because the majority of the employees, again, would be reaching the facility from the south along either BW Parkway or from the Beltway. And you can see the routes here. And mitigation was discussed for these intersections as part of the study. Staff is interested in understanding the status of this mitigation to address the impacts to these intersections. And staff is requesting the Army Corps submit this mitigation with the preliminary design. Now moving to the environment, in particular stormwater management. The Army Corps has developed a plan to determine how to reduce the impact to the surrounding areas. This plan will meet, according to the BEP, will meet both the Maryland Department of the Environmental Site Design, as well as ESA Section 438 requirements. They are incorporating the strategies on the left-hand portion of the slide to meet these requirements. Since there are sensitive areas on the site, again, several wetlands, the wet meadow, and intermittent streams, staff is requesting that the stormwater management plan be submitted with the preliminary design. With regard to tree replacement, the Army Corps stated that there are 149 specimen trees on the site. Some of these are standalone trees, while others are part of the forested area to the east, again, that area over here. And unfortunately, the project is calling for the removal of 125 of the designated specimen trees. And these trees are actually in either good or very good condition. Since the building location will take up the central portion of the site, this area here, and then the entry area will be located down here, it's unclear to staff if any of these trees could be relocated, as the NCPC's tree replacement approach is really to preserve the trees first. If preservation is not possible, then transplant or relocate them, and then finally, replace if that is ultimately necessary. Staff therefore finds that the Army Corps is citing the building to minimize impacts to existing forested areas, however, will require the removal of 125 specimen trees. Requests that the Army Corps provide as part of the preliminary design, a tree survey and replacement plan in conformance with NCPC's policies. Moving on to site improvements, here are several plans showing the site circulation for trucks, employees, and visitors. We note that the truck route and loading dock in the plan would be close to the residential areas to the north. The loading dock area is here. And we are concerned that there may be light or noise impacts with this new facility being placed at the site, so we are requesting that the BEP perform an analysis of operations at the proposed loading dock on the north side of the building, including any lighting or noise impacts on the residential neighborhood north of Odell Road. Another concern that staff had was understanding the number of visitors that would be coming to the site. Here's a kind of close-up plan of the truck screening area, the employee and VIP screening area, and then the visitor screening area. This image here on the bottom right is just showing what that employee VIP screening building might look like, and then what the visitor screening building may look like. And while this does not include much visitor parking, as you can see on this image, staff would like to know more about the tours and what that might look like. And we request that the Army Corps provide information describing the nature and frequency of visitors, and how this may impact the overall transportation network. We have a rendering of the site. This is the southern facade of the building. It has the parking off to the, this is the southern parking off to the right here, and a walking path leading to the main entrance. And there is some lighting that's included in this image, a number of lighting fixtures. But there are large areas for parking, and BEP has not developed a lighting plan for the site and shared it with staff. And we would therefore request BEP provide a lighting plan and include renderings from Odell Road, showing how this will not adversely impact the residential area at night. And finally, for historic preservation, this site is part of the 1934 New Deal Master Plan for the campus. The entire Bark Campus is a historic district. This is Area 200. And they are, of course, there are contributing buildings and elements in this district. There are 22 existing buildings and structures on this site that cannot be reused on the campus, given the nature of the proposed facility. In addition, all of the buildings are in poor condition, having been abandoned since the mid-1990s. There are three potentially eligible archaeological sites that were identified on this property, but after a Phase II investigation, two of these sites were eliminated from being eligible. The last site is not in an area that would be disturbed by the project. The Army Corps has initiated the Section 106 process with the Maryland Historic Trust and other consulting parties, and they are developing, they have developed and are circulating a draft memorandum of agreement for the site. This should be fully executed fairly shortly, and staff notes the Army Corps will submit proposed mitigation measures as part of the Section 106 process at the preliminary review. Finally, with regard to referring the project out, staff did refer the project out to the Maryland Clearinghouse, the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission, as well as the City of Greenbelt. In January of this year, we received comments from all of these groups. The Maryland State Agencies noted that the project would be consistent with their plans, and several noted further consultation. This, of course, would be the Maryland Historic Trust and the Maryland Department of the Environment. The Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission requested that the project be referred to it again at preliminary design, as it didn't feel that there was sufficient information for them to be able to respond to the project as it was presented. And then finally, the City of Greenbelt, they are here to speak on the project. They voiced their strong opposition to the project, noting an incomplete draft environmental impact statement analysis, and that the project was, they thought, being placed in an inappropriate site. They did also provide information, if the building were actually located here, then there would be a number of items that should be addressed. These items are listed here, and this letter, the letter that the City of Greenbelt provided has been included in the staff report, and their comments have been incorporated into our recommendations. Representatives from the city are here to speak, in addition to representatives from Beltsville, from the Vansville Neighborhood Organization, and from the Prince George's County and state governments for your benefit. And with that, I'll have, I'll note that I have already incorporated the executive director's recommendations into my presentation, so I will spare reading several pages of recommendations, and I will conclude my presentation. I'm available to answer questions, and there are representatives from the BEP, from the US Army Corps of Engineers, and their consultant team to answer questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Are there any questions on the commissioners?
Yes.
Commissioner May.
I just have one question about truck access, and maybe you covered this in the presentation. I mean, how will trucks be accessing the site? What, you know, in the outer network? I mean, how do they get, how do they get to the site?
There's, they can go either Edmiston Road, I don't think they can, they're able to go on BW Parkway, given the limits that are there. So it would be the Beltway to Edmiston Road. There's also Route 1, they can go over to Powder Mill. There's a couple of roads to go over there, but Edmiston Road would be the main, Edmiston to Powder Mill would be the main route. Or they could go, I guess, Soil Conservation Road, which is to the east of BW Parkway.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I mean, that was my main question, because I wanted to make sure that nobody was under the false impression that heavy vehicles could make their way there on the Baltimore-Washington Parkway.
Yeah, they've actually been talking to some folks at the National Park Service about various things, including intersection issues, and so they definitely have, I remember this being raised at a previous meeting, so.
Yeah. I mean, I think, you know, we already have concerns with the volume of traffic on the Baltimore-Washington Parkway, and there are times of the day when it's extremely slow. I don't know how that coincides with any of the shifts changes for the facility, but I'm glad they're speaking with our park staff who manage that Parkway. One other question is, I know that early on, and this may have been in the previous presentation, there was discussion of alternatives for how the parking would be locating. Can you remind me or tell me whether there was ever any thought to locating the parking actually under the building itself as opposed to putting it in a structure or putting it on the surface?
Yeah, they did not look at parking underneath the building, partially because of, there's just security concerns that they have with doing that. I've heard this before, they can kind of get in, and I've heard this from other agencies before, but they can get into more detail as to what the particular concerns were.
That's okay. I just want to understand if that was ever considered. I can understand the challenges of not wanting to have parking under a building like this. I just was curious as to whether it was actually considered.
They did look at, and I say it's kind of a hybrid structure, they were looking at somewhat of a terraced parking, so that you would have a surface, and then there would, you know, there'd be a kind of parking partially underneath, another parking area, so it would be somewhat of a structure, but not a, you know, totally below-ground facility.
Okay. And then one last question. Do we, of the 125 specimen trees that would be removed, do we know how many of them are being removed for parking lots?
They could give you more response for that. I don't know the exact number that are, that they're removing for parking. I think most of them are for the building, but I don't want to, you know, press.
So is there somebody who's on the, in the meeting right now who can answer that question?
Yeah, they have their, either they're Joe Roco, who's with SOM, or possibly Ms. Roadside.
Sure.
Ms. Harwell.
Sure, Carlton, thank you. Joseph Roco here with SOM. Commissioner May, yes, there are, the bulk of the trees are being removed for the building proper. The higher percentage is being removed for the building, and a much less percentage for surface parking.
But we don't know the actual numbers.
No, we can differentiate that for future discussions and give you that breakdown.
I think that might be of interest in future rooms. That's it for me. Questions?
Thanks, Commissioner May. I noticed there are several commissioners who would like to ask questions, and the order that I noticed was Commissioner Trueblood, Commissioner Cash, Commissioner Argo, and Commissioner Wright. So we'll start with Commissioner Trueblood.
Thank you very much, and thanks for the presentation, Mr. Hart. So my question gets to one of our favorite topics, parking. I know we have new parking, you know, we have the parking policy in the comprehensive plan. Remind me, you know, the 1 to 2 was arrived at, from what I recall, assuming kind of a regular office situation where people show up during regular office hours. Is that, is that fair? So to me, that means that you're filling it up for eight hours a day, or 10 hours a day, or whatever that might be, and then it's empty for the rest of the time. So, in my, in my, my kind of thinking about peaks and flows here, if you're spreading that across three shifts across the day, you actually need fewer parking spaces, because not everybody is all there at the same time like in a normal office building. So I guess, so, well, anyway, I just, I, that was my question. You answered it, I'll leave the rest for comments. Unless you have, yeah, I think you answered my question. My only other question is, will you just remind me what the proposal is in terms of bike-ped facilities onsite?
They, and I can ask Joe Roco to respond to this further. As far as I've been able to see, there weren't facilities for bike and pads beyond, there's a, I think, a trail that's for kind of employees to just walk up and down to, you know, get some exercise during the day, but not connecting, you know, to, on the roads like along Powder Mill Road, as far as I've been aware of that. So I can ask them to respond further if they've looked at that in any further method. But I know that there are changing facilities for them, you know, because they have to get out of their kind of, you know, clothes they come with to the uniforms that they will use once they're actually in the facility, and their work clothes that they have.
So Carlton, yes, the intention is that from the intersection at Powder Mill Road all the way up to the entry to the parcel, we are studying adding a bike lane. And as you noted, we do have locker room and showers facilities for staff coming to the facility.
Okay, thank you. I will save the rest. I think those are my only questions. I will, they will then turn into comments later.
Thank you. Commissioner Cash.
Thanks so much. I had a few data call questions for BEP I think would be the best ones to answer. So right now, how many parking spaces, I assume there's no parking spaces in the BEP facility itself currently, is that correct?
My understanding is that there are some parking that's there. I don't know exactly how many. I don't know if Chuck Davis is able to answer that question. I think he's on the phone, or on the line.
Yeah, so we have several, we have, Mr. Cash, we have several hundred onsite parking spaces, and then we also provide employee parking in a local, in a nearby privately-owned garage. We basically purchase those spaces for our employees or subsidize those spaces, so.
Okay, see, I saw on the federal procurement data system, it looks like there's a contractor, there was at one point, for about 300 parking spaces adjacent and private parking. But you say there's also some spaces, like in the building itself, or controlled by that.
Correct. Correct.
So that leads me to the other question is, what is the current mix? So if there's only 300, maybe 500 spaces, there seems to be a delta between what you're proposing. So do you have a breakdown of the mix of people who commute in by metro versus actually park?
Yes, we do have that, and we will provide that in the next round. I think we've provided that to staff on a preliminary level, just as a data call. But it will be significantly more single occupancy vehicles going to the park facility as opposed to downtown, just because of the accessibility of metro downtown right now.
But is it maybe like 50/50? Is it the vast majority? I mean, no.
From what I recall, it was, there was about 50% to 60% that were taking metro.
Metro, yeah, okay.
And so the rest were, I guess, either driving or some other method of getting to work. And this is having to remember, and I don't, Commissioner Cash, I may be a little bit off on it, but it's about that, maybe like 55% or so.
Okay, well, that's all my questions for now, but I'll have more when we get to the discussion later.
Thank you. Commissioner Argo.
Do I have my mic on? I can't tell.
Yes, you do.
Good. I think most, as anybody who's paying attention to this can see, the questions are concentrated on transportation and parking issues related to this facility. And it seems as though, I guess, attributable to the stage in which this is being submitted, but there are innumerable things that need to be paid attention to before this gets resubmitted. There's, I'm a little surprised that these issues weren't addressed in a more straightforward way, even in the preliminary, even in the preliminary presentation. So I think there's a lot of opportunity with the space that they have available to provide the kind of alternatives that we're looking for for employee commutes to this facility. It's a big hole in the, you know, in the design and presentation.
Thank you. Any other questions, Commissioner Argo?
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Okay, I'm back.
Yes, I can hear you.
You're back. Okay, Commissioner Argo, do you have any further questions?
No. I appreciate the opportunity to comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright.
Okay, well, now for something completely different. I'll leave the questions about parking and transportation for now, which are concerning. But I want to ask about the building. You've taken pains to render what seems a reflective surface, and can I ask, with the building skin, and are we talking curtain wall? What are we looking at? It's hard to tell. I apologize if I missed it in Carlton's very well-written report, but that was my first question. And my second question was regarding height. At 40 to 50 feet, this is not a small building, even, you know, in silhouette. So could the architect or the Army Corps explain those two things, please?
Yes, hi, Commissioner Wright. Thank you for raising those two points. First off, you know, the design process is moving quickly. The images that you have here are actually outdated. The, there are two types of fenestrations on the building, and the first is a muted stainless steel metal surface that is acting as a screen for sunshading, which reduces the energy load required to heat and cool the building, which is reducing the carbon footprint, very important for this facility. That's on the southern portion, which is facing the entry to the building, and that's along the admin bar, where the administrative staff and the laboratory workers are stationed. And behind that, it's about a two-foot gap, behind that is a conventional clear insulated glass curtain wall. So staff from the interior can look out and enjoy that pastoral view. And the other condition is on the east, west, and north, and those are opaque metal panels, again, a very muted surface. It is not specular. It is not reflective. We're being very conscious of the sun striking that surface, given the community. And so hopefully that addresses your first point on reflectivity. The second point on the building height, in the EIS, early on, about a year ago, we established a maximum height of 50 feet, and we're currently trending under 40 feet. We recently reduced the building by three feet. So again, in deference to the local community, view sheds from all of the public roads, be it Powder Mill, Odell, or Edmiston, we have a series of view sheds that we have provided to Carlton's team, indicating that the building, for the most part, isn't visible from the public realm.
So you were, what were the circumstances that led to your ability to reduce the height? I'm trying to get at, why is, why does it need to be this tall? Is it because the equipment needs it? Or is it impossible to reduce the height and have a subterranean level? I'm asking earnestly, this is not a gotcha question. It just seems taller than it needs to be.
Fair question. It is a large facility. Regarding the building height, I did mention we did take three feet out of the overall building, and we don't have elevations in front of you. But if one were to look at the west elevation, which is the primary elevation that anybody could ever possibly see this facility from, given the topography and given the existing forestation that exists along Odell Road. So the most visible viewpoint is where the cornfield is, and Carlton showed that image. What we're doing is to balance cut and fill on the site, so that we're not taking any soil off the site. We're reusing everything we have. We're building an earth berm along the west elevation of the building, which is rising such that from the top of that berm to the top of the building, it's approximately 17 feet. So it's very, very low within the landscape.
I'll take your word for it. But I would ask that these, in your next submission, that's detailed for us to see from all sides, and preferably with some sections. I note you didn't answer my question about whether it was required by the equipment. I mean, I'm assuming that you're designing towards a program, but I guess what I'm asking, and it may, is for a more complete explanation of the program of requirements, and how it expresses itself in the building, or necessitates the building height. However, you've reduced the visibility, which, again, I take your word for it, but I'd like to, you know, trust but verify, and have that visual evidence in the next submission.
Absolutely. Happy to do that.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Davis, I believe you had a question, and then I see Commissioner Dixon.
I don't have any questions. My questions are answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dixon.
Yeah, my question goes to the tourists. I think you mentioned it's parking for people who want to come to, in a tour. I know that the present facility is very popular. People like to see the money getting credit. But I wasn't clear from the building of how that was going to be accommodated. And I guess when we get more detail, we will get a feel for that. But I just, I think it's going to be an attraction in many ways. So I just wondered whether that is being worked into the scheme of things.
Commissioner Dixon, I'll, I think Mr. Davis from BEP may be able to give some, give a little bit of information about that. This has been somewhat of a, this has somewhat changed over the last six to eight months or so, and it may be helpful just to hear where they are now. And I don't think this necessarily needs to be a very in-depth discussion right now about this, but it would be helpful for them to understand that a little bit more. So thank you, Mr. Davis, if you could provide that for them.
Sure. Commissioner Dixon, the public tour feature for the facility will be incorporated into the building itself. There is a separate entrance point where the pre-scheduled tourist will gather to be screened for security purposes, and then they will be shuttled over to the facility entrance, separate entrance from the employees. But they will enter onto, yes, the first floor into a public tour lobby area with exhibits about the U.S. currency program. The secretary is very, the previous secretary was very interested in highlighting the U.S. currency program, not just BEP. Part of our mission is to educate the public on U.S. currency and what features are on it, why, how it's made, the history of it. They will then go up to a second-floor area where there will be more exhibits, and then have the, ultimately, the overlook of the manufacturing floor, where they will be able to see currency being made. That is pretty much, you know, there will be different displays. One of them will be as part of our historic discussions and mitigations that we're working on. There will be an exhibit area discussing the history of the poultry site, and, you know, documenting what has happened over the past several, you know, 100 years of that site. There will also be an area where we highlight the sustainability of the building with the green roof photo of the tax. And then ultimately, just areas, you know, areas that have description of how the currency's made, the security features in there, and then just, you know, how you can recognize counterfeit currency, et cetera. But all of this will be scheduled. We do not anticipate the number of people that we currently receive downtown. Our downtown facility will stay open as a public tour because of the location of the, you know, to the mall, and you get a lot of foot traffic, whereas we don't anticipate foot traffic drop-ins out at this facility. It'll be more pre-scheduled, limited to smaller groups, and really target the schools and the civic organizations around the area. That's kind of what we're looking for. So I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, thank you very much. I didn't hear any mention of samples, but I appreciate that.
Are there any further questions from our commissioners?
Yeah, I do actually have one more.
Sure, Commissioner May.
Yeah, and maybe we covered this in the, in the information presentation a couple of months ago. I was looking through my notes, I didn't see it there, but I'm just curious about the programmatic need and the projections for the need for currency, paper currency going into the future. I'm probably not alone in experiencing the fact that so many of my friends, acquaintances, et cetera, don't have cash. They don't carry cash, they don't use cash. It's a rare thing. It's just not as necessary as it was when, well, even just a few years ago. So I wonder if there's actually been, if somebody, I mean, I assume you are tracking, or BEP is tracking the need for cash, and that there is a projected reason why this is necessary. But I just, I just want to get some confirmation that people are looking into the future and saying, yes, we need this plant of this size to make sure that we have enough cash when so many people don't use it anymore.
Commissioner May, I think this is probably Mr. Davis again that could respond to this. So I'll let him do that.
Commissioner May, I will defer, we have our deputy director, Marty Griner, on the phone. She can, you know, she's intimately involved with the Federal Reserve Board, our ultimate client, and the Department of Treasury. And I'd let her speak to that, please.
Okay.
Yes, hi, Marty Griner. We monitor this closely with the Federal Reserve, who is our customer for United States currency. Demand for currency remains steady and currently actually is, has increased fairly dramatically because of the pandemic. Anytime there is a disaster, either a natural disaster, or like what we're experiencing over the last year, people flee to U.S. currency, they hold on to U.S. currency, it's a safe haven. Our currency is used around the world. It's used as a store of value, and also as, while electronic transactions are growing, and we do monitor that extraordinarily closely, the Federal Reserve has studies that they perform every year on the demand for currency. The economies around the world are also growing in terms of transactions and the need for currency, and so therefore, our demand remains steady and growing. So we actually anticipate very, very strong demand over the coming years, and also due to the pandemic, the Federal Reserve is increasing their strategic storage of currency, and so that will also increase our demand in the coming years. The final thing is, is we also need two facilities for continuity of operations. So if we were to lose a facility, we need to make sure that we are able to continue to manufacture currency in the alternate facility. So there's a continuity of operations factor that comes into play. The new security features that are currently being worked on require equipment, and the new equipment for manufacturing currency will no longer fit in our existing facility. So that was one of the other primary reasons why we need a new facility.
Right. And I'm not questioning the need for a new facility, it's more about the size and whether, you know, we get how many ever years down the line when this is built, whether in fact there will be sufficient demand for all of this production capacity. And it is reassuring to know that you're looking at it, but I, boy, there's just sort of a common sense aspect of this, that it's changed so much in just the last 10 years. The, you know, the way people, at least the people that I interact with, the number who don't carry cash and probably will never carry significant amounts of cash, I'm like the only guy walking around with bills in my pocket, you know?
Right.
I just attribute that to being old, and I can understand how, you know, the fact that my sons don't carry cash doesn't mean that much. They're indicative of a generation, but that generation is relatively small within the overall demand picture. I can understand that, but I also expect it to grow and change, and I'm, you know, there is going to be a point in the future, you know, where cash is virtually gone. I have to believe it. I just don't know whether it's in 1,000 years, or 100 years, or 20. But I'm glad to know that people are at least thinking about it, and it would be a shame if we, if there was such an investment in this building. And it turns out that you're, you only have to run it half the time, or use half the capacity, or something like that. So you've answered my question. Thank you.
Hi, I'm sorry, Teresa Fines. There's something I'd like to add. I think it's important to note, you know, in these conversations about the move to, the supposed move to a cashless society, there are more than 40% of the households in this country that are either unbanked or underbanked, and access to cash is really important. We need to continue to serve that audience.
I don't question that, and my question was answered. And please tell me who you are.
Sorry, I'm Teresa Fines with the Bureau of Engraving and Printing.
Okay, right. No, I understand. I mean, I'm only witnessing a small portion of the entire universe. universe of this, but I have to believe that the move toward being cashless will grow in the future, so. But just knowing that you're looking at it is sufficient for me. Thank you.
Mr. Davis, did you want to add anything?
No, 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 Teresa, Teresa Fines said exactly what I was going to say. We do have a, there is a congressional, congressional concern about underbanked and underserved populations.
More than just Congress, I'm sure.
Oh, yes, yes.
Right. Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Dixon, I see you raised your hand again.
Yeah.
Do you have another question?
Emphasize, not only domestically do we have populations that need cash and don't have access to electronics that allows you to move it, money otherwise, but internationally, hard currency is awfully critical. And I'm gonna tell you, there's certain, many, many parts of the world that, that you, the green dollar is very important to have in your hands, they don't want electronic stuff, they don't trust the technology, and they want it. So at the international level, and that's, that's where I think maybe even a, a ongoing consistent demand will, and even as we move forward in time, with the threats and the challenges to our networks and our computer systems, may be good to have some hard-earned, hard cash in your hand, rather than rely on your, on your, on your, on your phone tapping and your cards tapping and working. So I think that it's going to happen, you're right, Peter, but I think it's internationally a real, real issue. Thank you.
Right, yeah. Ms. Griner made that point as well, and I appreciate that. Like I said, the people who are not carrying cash nowadays, certainly the realm of people that I interact with, is a relatively, or a very small proportion of the total demand picture. So I understand that. Thank you, my question has been answered repeatedly.
Thank you. Any other questions from our commissioners? I have a question going back to the parking and sort of traffic impact, based on a comment Mr. Davis just made a few minutes ago about visitors. And while it'll be selected and, and perhaps fewer in volume, I'm curious, when you mentioned groups, how you anticipate those groups would arrive? My guess would be by bus. So I'm, I, I would like to ask, are you thinking about your parking situation and traffic flow in terms of buses? I think we've been really talking about the employees coming to and from, and, you know, single occupancy vehicles, but how, how about buses and the impact on the community with bus traffic?
Yes, we, we are looking at providing several parking spaces for buses, but again, all of our tours would be conducted outside of the commuting hours, the normal commuting hours. They would be, you know, typically nine to three or something like that, that has not been finalized yet. But again, that would still be a reserved time slot for those individuals. We wouldn't, you know, double book or triple book a bunch of buses coming out. And, and we're really, we're really assuming, again, it's going to be local civic groups and local, local schools, et cetera. It's not going to be the tourists coming from downtown, because we're still going to have the downtown public tour available for, for that, for, for the foreseeable future. I mean, that, that, that tour is not going to close. That, that was very important to, you know, our congressional oversight, and then also, you know, the District of Columbia, and then also with the previous secretary.
And so when, when you come back, you'll have in your plan, your projections of how many tours a day, how many buses in and out, that sort of thing? Because I think that would be an important detail to share.
Yeah, we've already, yeah, we've already started providing some of that data, and, you know, we'll further refine it as we move forward.
Thank you.
Vice Chair White?
Yes.
Yeah, just, I mean, that's actually one of the things that staff was, was interested in, in understanding, because we, we were made aware of the kind of, the visitors coming here, and we were not really sure how many we were talking about. And so what we were looking for as part of the, the staff, or the recommendation to you all, is, to the commission, is really understanding that further. So it's definitely on, on our mind as well.
Great. I figured it would be, but I, I just wanted to go ahead and ask while we had so many people in the conversation, so thank you, appreciate that, Mr. Hart. So with that, we have eight speakers who have signed up. I will call your name, and I would ask that you unmute, turn on your webcam, and begin your testimony. First is David Iannucci from Prince George's County Economic Development Corporation. Mr. Iannucci, you have five minutes to provide your testimony.
Thank you, Ms. White, and to the commissioners, thank you very much for this chance to talk. Again, my name is David Iannucci, I'm the president and CEO of the Prince George's County Economic Development Corporation. I'm speaking on behalf of Prince George's County Executive Angel Alsabrooks. You have her letter of record that was submitted dated January 25th, 2021. And I would ask that, that be considered my, my written, the written record on behalf of what I'm, I'm saying. Again, I represent the Economic Development Corporation, and we strongly support the proposed Bureau of Engraving and Printing location to Beltsville Agricultural Research Center. It's an unused, and I've been to the site and walked around, unused 100-acre parcel that has clearly been abandoned, with buildings with trees growing out of them and so forth, and on a 6,500-acre preserve. We think this is a very, very strong location for the Bureau of Engraving and Printing. This $1 billion federal facility would add 1,427 federal jobs to Prince George's County, and paying very good wages, and we're very, very pleased with that. About 31%, we understand, of the existing BEP workforce already lives in Prince George's County, so we think there's, that's an important factor, that the workforce has strong connections to this county already. Quite frankly, there's been a historic disparity on federal facilities located in Prince George's County relative to our, this other suburban jurisdictions in the metropolitan area. While we might have something over 20% of the federal workforce living in Prince George's County, we only have 4% or 5% of kind of federal jobs here in the county. We have, so the ratio's more than three to one in terms of people living here and federal jobs in the county. And we think the BEP locating in Prince George's County is, is the move toward addressing that. Notwithstanding that disparity, we already host to a number of important federal facilities, Goddard Space Site Center, Census Bureau, IRS, Joint Base Andrews, of course. Most recently, the Citizenship Immigration Service has brought about 3,800 jobs to, near the southern end of the county, the Branch Avenue Metro Station. We have a brand-new $600 million University of Maryland Teaching Hospital will be opening in June. A strong workforce, and we think there'll be important connections between the workforce needs of BEP and the ability of Bowie State University, the University of Maryland College Park, Capital College, and other facilities in terms of the type of workforce needs that you'll have in the future, because we're aware that a large percentage of the BEP workforce is near retirement age, and that'll be a factor that'll have to be taken into consideration. And the county has been very strong in the past economically. We have led the state of Maryland for job growth for six years, but of course, we're feeling the effects of COVID very, very strongly. And we've had more than twice as many people lost their jobs in a four-month period as we gained jobs in a six-year period. So we welcome these jobs coming here. We know that there are some very important issues that have been raised by the environmental impact statement. I've heard a very healthy and strong discussion by the commissioners today, and we understand that some of those issues will have to be addressed, particularly transportation issues and parking issues. And we understand that and recognize that, but I think it was significant to note that the environmental impact statement noted no significant issues that would stand in the way of the Bureau of Engraving and Printing locating itself at Beltsville Agricultural Research Center. I also say, and I, I'm watching my time, that I know that the people who run BARK actually are very supportive of Bureau of Engraving and Printing, because that has been an institution, also important to Prince George's County, that has been financially challenged with its appropriation, and they welcome the, the payments. So we see Bureau of Engraving and Printing's location at the Beltsville Agricultural Research Center, strengthening the mission of the Beltsville Agricultural Research Center by additional revenue stream that will allow it to address longstanding infrastructure issues of its own. So include, there's also a tourism aspect that has been talked about. We would welcome the tourist, the aspect of the visitor center, many, joining many other facilities and, and attractions in Prince George's County. And we've considered that, overall, the county is very, very supportive of the Bureau of Engraving and Printing coming to Prince George's County, locating Beltsville Agriculture Research Center. So again, on behalf of the county executive, and Prince George's County government, and the Economic Development Corporation, I thank you very much for your time, and want to make it clear, the county goes on record strongly in favor of this, of this move to this location. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Iannucci. Are there any questions? Hearing none, our next speaker is Rodney Roberts from the city of Greenbelt. Mr. Roberts, you will have five minutes to provide your testimony.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I assume you can hear me now.
Yes, thank you.
Just the other day, I stopped to enjoy a quiet moment at the Beaver Dam Creek, just a few hundred feet from the proposed 100-acre BEP industrial complex. As I enjoyed the sight of a bald eagle standing proudly atop its nest, I could also see the sign that reads "Anacostia River Herring Restoration Project." I wondered how Beaver Dam Creek, a small, slow-moving creek, barely more than 10 feet wide, and a couple of feet deep in most areas, could survive the influx of 120,000 gallons of polluted wastewater every day? I know the answer. It can't, and it won't. The, the site chosen by BEP for their 1 million square-foot building and 1,200-car parking lot has been described by BARK scientists as a, quote, "rare savanna habitat that is home to at least 230 species of birds, and a natural spring that provides a steady flow of crystal-clear water to Beaver Dam Creek." The stream that was mentioned as being intermittent is not intermittent, because I have, I played there when I was a kid, I go by there all the time, it's not intermittent, it runs. The site is dominated by hundreds of trees that are 100 years plus old, at least four acres of wetlands, and a diversity of flora and fauna. The entire site is proposed to be, quote, this is the same quote from the same scientist that did the bird survey, totally wiped out, and he was very disturbed at the, at the prospect of that happening. Beaver Dam Creek is known to be the cleanest creek in Prince George's County, yet instead of crystal-clear spring water, Beaver Dam Creek would henceforth be turned into a dumping ground for 120,000 gallons of polluted wastewater every day. I am here to ask the National Capitol Planning Commission to help save and preserve for future generations not just the 100-acre rare savanna, because what, because what is really at stake is the future of the largest, most biologically diverse contiguous forested open space on the East Coast. Yes, the Beltsville Agriculture Research Center, about 6,000 acres, Patuxent Wildlife Research Preserve, 12,800 acres, the undeveloped areas of NASA, and the Secret Service properties, both hundreds of acres, and the city of Greenbelt's 200-acre Forest Preserve, which abuts BARK, make up the largest remaining contiguous forested area on the East Coast. This area is critical to the health of the Chesapeake Bay and millions of residents of the Washington DC region. This area was once famously and properly described by the late US Senator Paul Sarbanes as the lungs of the Washington region. Here are the current known proposed projects that will directly and adversely affect the Beaver Dam, Indian Creeks, and Anacostia watershed. One, the BEP facility. Two, the Maglev train. Three, Baltimore-Washington Parkway widening, which may be facilitated from, because of this. Four, Capitol Beltway 95, 495 widening. And five, Kennelworth Avenue widening, Edmondson Road. Also, I believe these projects constitute environmental racism, because they all directly and adversely affect a majority-minority community, even though there are clear alternatives to all the proposed projects. If we cannot preserve this last bastion of beauty and biodiversity on the East Coast, we will never be able to avoid this catastrophic effects of global warming and climate change. And I think I have a little bit of time left. One thing that has been mentioned is that directly southwest and connected to this proposed site are fields that have been under, have had ongoing experiments for over 100 years. That's a very valuable asset to our country, especially in the, in the light that global warming is going to pose a huge effect on our agricultural economy and our ability to grow food for ourselves in the future. So this site, I think that is not suitable for this project, and there are many other sites within Prince George's County and elsewhere that this site could be located. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Are there any questions? Mr. Hart, I, I guess I'll take a, a point of privilege as chair today. Is there a response to the concerns raised about the environmental impacts? Would someone like to speak to that?
Yeah, I, I, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sometimes I just want to make sure I'm back on. So, and I know, I understand that Mr. Roberts brought up in a concern about the, I guess he's saying that there's wastewater that's being associated with the project that's going into Beaver Dam Creek. From my understanding, again, we can ask the BEP to, to respond to this in greater detail. My understanding is that there is a wastewater treatment plant that the water is actually, the wastewater is going to, that is actually connected to Beaver Dam Creek. So the, it, again, the, looking in the EIS, it, it stated that there was, the stormwater and, and I guess effluent going from the facility would reach this wastewater treatment plant first, would be treated, and then be released after it goes through treatment. There's, according to the EIS, there is sufficient, I guess, capacity at the, at the treatment plant to, to do that. And so I, I think that, while I understand that there is a greater amount of wastewater going to that facility, is, there is, it is not going directly into the, to the creek itself. Again, that's according to the, to the, to the EIS that we have been, been provided. Again, that's kind of information that, that is included in that, so.
Pond for cows.
Again, I, I have to go by what we have received as part of the information that is, you know, the, the documentation that has been provided here. I think we've talked about the, the tree impacts. I understand that there are, and commission, the, the staff has raised concerns about some of the trees and whether or not there could be relocation of some of the trees. And so we would look to have some information from the, from the applicant by the time we get to preliminary design. And I guess there were a number of projects that were being included in this, not necessarily that close, but they are within about two miles of the, of the, of the project, the widening of the road, the Maglev project. But again, this is, this is a particular site that is on a federal, existing federal installation in the, in the region. I, I think there was some, an issue raised about environmental justice as well. And that seems as though there is, and I'll let the, the neighborhood organization from Vansville that is here to speak, I'll let them actually talk about, you know, they're working with the, the applicant and meeting with the, with the applicant, and I guess the representatives from Beltsville as well that can, can talk about that. I'm not really sure how, if there's other, you know, responses, it looks like Mr. Davis would like to respond, respond to some of this as well.
I think that would be great, just to make sure we're sharing the information we have now, and, and certainly, Mr. Davis, I know you're working on these issues, and we'll continue to respond as we move through the process, but I just thought it was an important point to, to respond now, so thank you for raising your hand.
Sure, I'd like to clarify all of this once and for all. There's been a lot of rumors that have been placed out there and a lot of misinformation. So out of the 120,000 gallons per day, approximately less than 10,000 gallons per day
per day, approximately less than 10,000 gallons per day is industrial. The rest is from cooling tower, blowdown, is from sanitary, et cetera. Of the industrial, we're talking about rinse-water from cleaning of plates and cleaning of, of equipment that goes through an onsite industrial wastewater treatment plant. We remove all metals, we adjust the pH, we do everything that is, that, that makes the water basically similar to sanitary waste. Upon leaving, upon leaving our facility, it will then go to a USDA-owned treatment plant before it is discharged into the creek. That facility is currently operating at about 30% of their permitted capacity. Once our effluent is included in there, they will still be approximately 50% of what the Maryland Department of Environment has basically said that that creek can handle. So yes, it will add volume, but it's still 50% of the permitted capacity that the state has allowed USDA to discharge. And so that's part of the reason, one of the reasons that, you know, USDA and BEP are partnering is because we're going to help them pay for, you know, the operations of that facility. We're going to help them pay for the operations of the federally-owned roadway system that the public enjoys. Powder Mill Road is a federally-owned road that allows the public to cut through basically between the Baltimore-Washington Parkway and Edmiston Road. So, you know, I just wanted to, you know, go on the record of saying all of that because, you know, there's just been a lot of misinformation for the last year, year and a half out there with regards to, you know, we're going to destroy the Beaver Creek Dam, or Beaver Dam Creek, and, you know, we have no intentions of doing that. And so, you know, if we have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Davis, and thank you, Mr. Roberts, for, for your passion for this land and, and sharing your comments. We will continue to look at these questions as we move forward. Next is Helga Weschke from the Maryland Department of Commerce. Ms. Weschke, you have five minutes to provide your testimony.
Thank you and good afternoon to the commission members and the attendees. I represent the Maryland Department of Commerce. I'm the Director of Federal Business Relations, and I thank you for the opportunity to express our support for the Bureau of Engraving and Printing to locate their replacement currency production facility on the Beltsville Agricultural Research Center campus. And hopefully I won't have to repeat that. I submitted a letter for the record that I'll outline very quickly, and our focus is really on economic impact. Maryland has over 60 federal facilities and 12 major military bases. In, our role is basically to support, grow, and advocate for and partner with our federal and military agencies. A few examples which Mr. Iainucci just mentioned in the county are NASA, IRS, Census Bureau, NOAA, and the Joint Base Andrews, and they support thousands and thousands of jobs in the area. So bringing 1,600 highly-skilled jobs will significantly impact Prince George's, the region, and the state economy. The construction of the new technologically-advanced currency production operation versus the renovation of an aged facility will result in a cost savings of over $600 million to the taxpayers. Also, the Department of Treasury and BEP have a commitment for green development in the design of sustainable facility. And the construction of the facilities is going to employ approximately 1,700 construction workers, resulting in an estimated total earnings of 1.5 million over the life of the construction project. And the 1,600 employees will have an average yearly salary of $99,000 per employee, resulting in a total earnings of 16 million annually. And these numbers vary, but what I currently have is 65% of the workforce reside in Maryland and 43 live in Prince George's County, but I'll let the experts address that. And they will benefit from this bureau's relocation. And the employees will have a positive impact on the local economy, as there are 2,000 retailers with employing over 25,000 employees in a five-mile radius of bark. Maryland's support of the project began in 2018, when Governor Hogan wrote a key congressional senators and representatives to encourage the passage of the bills to authorize the transfer of the land for and the construction of the currency production facility on the Beltsville Agricultural Research Center campus. In 2019, the Maryland Commerce Secretary Kelly Schultz sent a letter of support during the scoping process. And just last November, the Governor Hogan expressed, again, his support for the relocation during the draft environmental impact statement comment period. So as you can see, the location of the Bureau of Engraving and Printing production facility in the county will substantially impact the economy. And the governor recognizes this impact and has encouraged it from the beginning and will going forward. And I thank you, and I also thank David Iainucci for his support in his presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Weschke. Are there any questions? Next is Holly Simmons for the, from the city of Greenbelt. Ms. Simmons, you have five minutes to provide your testimony. No, not yet. Want to try again? Ms. Costa, anything you can suggest to help Ms. Simmons with sound?
Why don't we go to the next person and we'll see if we can figure out how to help Ms. Simmons come online.
Great. Ms. Simmons, we'll come back to you. Next is Howard Zhang from the USDA. Mr. Zhang, you have five minutes to provide your testimony.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Howard Zhang. I serve as the Center Director for the USDA, ARS, Beltsville Agricultural Research Center in Beltsville, Maryland. This center has been in this place for 111 years, since 1910. And the location we're looking at has the history of the Beltsville White, which is a turkey that 90% of the country's turkey production has a genetics connection to this turkey that was developed at this site. I have been involved with the BEP's relocation project since 2017, and Bark views this project as mutually beneficial to BEP and Bark. The land, approximately 100 acres off of Paltry Road, has been underutilized and is a brownfield since Bark constructed a new poultry research facility in the 1990s that replaced bulk of the functions in this area. The exceptions are three poultry quarantine buildings and the wildlife management building. The transfer of the land was authorized by Congress in 2018, and the MOA between ARS and BEP was signed in 2020. Bark facility staff have been involved with the Army Corps of Engineers designing team in all aspects of this project. Beltsville Agricultural Research Center fully supports this project. I also wanted to say about transportation. We run the bus service from the Greenbelt Bark Station to, no, the metro station, to the campus. And we see possibilities if employees would, of BEP, would use the metro, we can share the bus ride with them. And we also have a very large impervious surface on campus. Our building mass is about 3 million square foot, and out of those, about 28% of our buildings are scheduled, in terms of square footage, are scheduled to be demolished in the next 10-plus years. So we're going to significantly reduce the amount of impervious surface on campus. And hopefully, if you look at the BEPs moving in, their 1 million square foot of construction roughly will make the overall Beltsville locations' non-pervious surface about the same. So with that, I wanted to conclude my testimony, and if I can ask any questions, if there is, there are.
Thank you so much, and please forgive me for mispronouncing your name. Any questions? Hearing no questions. Thank you very much. And Ms. Costa, are we ready to go back to Ms. Simmons?
I believe she's joined just by phone, so let's see if she can join us now. Ms. Simmons, are you available?
Yes, I think I should be here.
We can hear you. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, perfect. Good afternoon, members of the commission. For the record, Holly Simmons, community planner, speaking on behalf of the Greenbelt City Council, which voted in opposition to this project and which has submitted a letter outlining serious concerns. The city borders the Beltsville Agricultural Research Center and values bark as an integral part of Greenbelt's Greenbelt. The city finds that the project conflicts with the Beltsville Agricultural Research Center 1996 master plan, which has the stated objective of developing a framework to support accomplishment of the following items: preservation of bark's low-density character, improvement of bark's visual environment, and protection of wildlife and birds, among others. Siding this industrial facility on bark would undermine established planning policies at the county level as well. The site is located within the county's reserved open space zone and designated within the priority preservation area, growth tier four, the Plan 2035 rural and agricultural policy area, and the subregion one master plan rural tier, all of which intend to prioritize the preservation of prime agricultural land or limit development. Although the land on bark is not bound by local zoning or policy areas, these designations provide clear indications of the highest and best use for this land. During the February 4 Commission meeting, BEP indicated that the site is previously developed and not a greenfield. It is true that more than 20 historic buildings and structures currently occupy the site, many of which are contributing resources to the NRHP-eligible bark historic districts. However, much of the site is undeveloped. This fact is evidenced by the removal of 3.6 acres of forest, nearly 80 acres of meadow and agriculture communities, and 125 individual specimen trees, the filling of nearly 1 acre of wetlands, and the diversion and/or filling of 226 linear feet of streams that would be necessary to complete this project. The project will also impact Beaver Dam Creek, a high-quality tier-two stream located off-site on bark. In addition to onsite impacts to waterways that feed the creek, the facility will discharge 120,000 gallons of treated effluent to Beaver Dam Creek each day, thereby increasing the amount of permitted discharge by 60%. Further, the transportation mitigation shown in the TIS, which has not been addressed in the concept submittal, would add another 340,000 square feet, approximately 8 acres, of new impervious surface to local roadways. The city is highly concerned about the impact of on- and off-site hydrology and the wildlife and plant species in wetlands, waterways, and floodplains. Treasury has yet to identify how they will be able to meaningfully mitigate the loss of and impact to wetlands, waterways, tree canopy, and terrestrial and aquatic habitats, a fact which is all the more concerning when considering the potential cumulative adverse effects of this project when combined with other major development projects being contemplated in the area, including the Baltimore-Washington SC Maglev, which is considering three alternative sites for its approximately 180-acre train maintenance facility, two of which are located on bark, Beltway Widening, and Baltimore-Washington Parkway Widening. The city also has serious concerns regarding traffic and site accessibility. The applicant proposes to relocate a facility employing upwards of 1,600 people from an area well-served by public transit and easily accessed on foot or by bicycle to an area virtually unserved by public transit located on a rural road lacking pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure. Employees will generally travel in single occupancy vehicle, which poses serious concerns for congestion on already overtaxed local roads. Additionally, it is possible that employees will have to travel farther to get to the new facility. According to the TIS, an employee survey conducted by BEP found that, quote, "The largest concentration of existing employees come from southern Prince George's County, western Charles County, and northern Stafford County, Virginia, with comparatively few employees claiming residence north of the proposed site." This suggests that although a large minority of existing employees may live within Prince George's County, moving the facility north from its current location to Beltsville could increase commutes for much of the facility's workforce, potentially leading to increased greenhouse gas emissions. In summary, this project will have significant adverse impacts on bark, the human and natural environment, transportation, and the surrounding community. Thank you for this opportunity to comment and to reaffirm the city's strong opposition to siding this development on bark.
Thank you very much for those comments. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we will keep moving forward, and Ms. Simmons, we will continue to look for answers to those questions as we work through the process. So thank you very much, and thanks for your creativity with your phone. Next, we have Lovelene D. Perkins from the Vansville Heights Citizens Association. Ms. Perkins, you have five minutes to provide your testimony. Welcome.
Thank you, and good afternoon to the members of the National Capital Planning Commission. My name is Lovelene D. Perkins. Today, I am honored to be here to speak on behalf of the members of the Vansville Heights Citizens Association, Incorporated, and Mr. John D. Perkins, President. My presence today is to speak in reference to Agenda Item File Number 8243, Bureau of Engraving and Printing Currency Production Facility. We are in support of the relocation of the Bureau of Engraving and Printing to the Beltsville Agricultural Research Center. Vansville is a historic community in the Prince George's County, and for statistical purposes, Vansville is part of the Beltsville Census-designated plates. Vansville, Maryland was officially designated as a historical site by the Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission on January 30, 1973. You may ask, why is this significant? It is significant because the Vansville community historical marker is located at Odell Road and Old Baltimore Pike, which is within several blocks of bark, where the BEPs seek to house this new facility, which is being relocated from downtown Washington, DC. During several meetings of the Vansville Heights Citizens Association, Incorporated, we discussed and unanimously agreed and will welcome BEP to the historic Vansville community. The Vansville Heights Association, Incorporated welcomes the Bureau of Engraving with the understanding that they will work hand in hand with the Vansville community. This is a community that they will be a part of, and we inquire that there be minimum to no impact. We've met with several representatives of the BEP project, particularly with Mr. Chuck Davis. He and his team share their great respect and an interest in maintaining our historic area with a desire to develop good community work and relations. Mr. Davis and his team also shared with us the following, to name just a few of their intent for our community. Their intent to remove the rubble strips along the length of Powder Mill Road to reduce the significant noise generated as vehicles pass over each strip. Removal of 22 derelict facilities associated with the existing site, each of which is a public, safety, and environmental hazard. Improvements to immediate traffic network in accordance with the recommendations presented in the 2020 Traffic Impact Study. And welcoming of the local schools for field trips, events like career days and hand-on experiences for Chemistry Week, continuing with Project Lead the Way. Our expectations are that if BEP is located on the bark facility, they will continue to reach out to the community for opportunities to share in advance what changes may need to be made at their facility that may impact our community. Many of BEP employees are located in Prince George's County. However, BEP has shared that for our community, in the future, higher-than-average compensation job opportunities will be available within the bureau. However, we are not naive, and we've discussed and shared our concerns with BEP, and we know that initial plans will continue to involve, we're simply asking for continual review of plans for specific infrastructure improvements for several major roadways in our area that will be critically impacted. for several major roadways in our area that will be critically impacted by the increased workforce. Several major highways BEP has under consideration for improvement based on the recommendations presented in the 2020 Traffic Impact Study to BEP. However, I'm not sure what considerations will be given to Odell Road, a very narrow two-lane, currently a wall-travel road located at the back entrance of Bark. It is said that we are to be good stewards of our land and use all of it in a very proper and safe manner. I'm sure the term environmental stewardship is not new to anyone. It refers to being responsible protective of the natural environment through conservation and sustainable practices. And this is based on land ethic, dealing with man's relation to land and to the animals and plants which grow upon it. Land ethic should become a part of our everyday life, and understanding this, we should proclaim what we will do individually and collectively to build and strengthen our relationship to the land, to the animals, to plants upon which they grow. How will we take care of the water use, the air we breathe, without the priority being money, unlimited concessions, and without focus on self? Proper use of the land. So Vansville Heights Citizens Association, Incorporated, is encouraged, supportive, and look forward to many opportunities to discuss this project in the very early stages of its progression. So we have a new neighbor, BEP. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perkins. Are there any questions? Hearing none, I will make a comment. I really appreciate your eloquence about the importance of the land ethic, particularly given the work I do in my day job. So thank you for making that statement. Next, we have Cynthia Smith from the Greater Belsville Business Association. Ms. Smith, you have five minutes to provide your testimony.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to address this, Commission. I appreciate your time. For the record, my name is Cynthia Smith, and I am the President of the Greater Belsville Business Association. GBBA, not to be confused with Residence for a Better Belsville, was formed in 2012. Our mission is twofold, in that we strive to support the growth of small businesses in the Greater Belsville area, as well as serve as advocates for issues regarding health, transit, education, and anything that directly affects our community. Let it be known that as an organization, GBBA stands in favor of moving the Bureau of Engraving and Printing BEP production facility from Washington, DC to Belsville, Maryland. From a small business growth perspective, the people that are employed at BEP will be potential customers to the small businesses in Belsville and the surrounding areas. These employees will need gas for their vehicles. They will need places to eat, drugstores and other retail venues for shopping, and some may want to take an exercise class before or after work. The businesses in this area have much to offer and really value the opportunity to serve their customers. BEP employees will have access to all the wonderful products and services that this area has to offer. In terms of traffic, the Belsville and Vansville Citizens Associations, along with GBBA, have long advocated for upgrading Route 201, Edmiston Road, and the other local roads that have been impacted by the growth in our area. Upgrading Route 201 will increase our ability to better move the traffic which exists today, thereby reducing emissions while supporting the increased traffic from the new facility. This upgrade has long been needed. In terms of impact on the environment, the state-of-the-art facility is an excellent use in environmentally sensitive lands. The impact on the environment is minimal due to the inclusion of numerous green building technologies, including the use of photovoltaic panels, green roofs, and rainwater capture, just to mention a few of their initiatives. The upgrade on all the surrounding roads also has a positive impact on our environment due to the lower emissions that result from traffic moving rather than just standing still as it does today. After attending a presentation at Bark regarding the new facility, I was very also impressed by their plans for the future. I had the opportunity to see how a facility like the one proposed here has been successful in Fort Worth, Texas, a newer facility in a much more densely populated area. As Bark has been a good neighbor, BEP plans on investing their time and effort into this community. Their future plans to run a STEM program in partnership with the local school system and possibly provide an opportunity to have a vendor fair for local business is what being a good neighbor is all about. Again, GBBA stands with Vansville, who is the closest community affected with this facility, and the other community organizations who support moving this production facility to Belsville. Thank you again for this opportunity to provide testimony on behalf of GBBA.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we will move to the next speaker. Thank you again. Our last speaker is Karen Coakley. Ms. Coakley, you have three minutes to speak.
Okay, my name is Karen Coakley, and I am speaking for myself personally, but just for the members of the National Capital Planning Commission, so that you understand. I am also President of the Belsville Citizens Association, and I've been involved with this for many, many years. First of all, I stand strongly, and I can also attest that the association stands with the Vansville Heights Citizens Association. We have worked on many, many projects over the years, and I agree with Ms. Perkins' comments about the communications we've had with representatives from the Bureau of Printing and Engraving. I personally live three blocks from the headquarters of Bark. I also want to let you know that I support Mr. David Iainucci's comments. I support Ms. Helga Weskey's comments, most importantly, Howard Zhang's, and as I've mentioned before, D. Perkins and Cynthia Smith's comments for this project. Over the years, I have watched the various departments at the Department of Agriculture move out of the Belsville region, and my concern is, the more we lose with projects being done at Bark, the greater we put Bark at risk. It was mentioned that this complex is part of the largest open space in the area. Well, when this land sits there vacant, it makes it easier for members of Congress to think about selling off land, because this has been a real threat over my entire life, you know, watching people want to take pieces of Bark away. I know you all are busy today, so I just, I don't feel I need to reiterate things. I think what was said by the speakers I've mentioned in the past, but I strongly, strongly support and I welcome the Bureau of Printing and Engraving coming to the Bark complex, and I know we will be working with them hand in hand as we move forward. And I've already submitted written testimony.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Coakley. Yes, thank you very much, Ms. Coakley. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Yes, for a second I thought I lost it, and I'm very conscious of my time, so I just didn't want to go over.
Well, thank you very much. You were very much in time. We appreciate your comments. Does anyone have any questions of Ms. Coakley? Hearing none, this concludes the public testimony on this project. Again, I would like to thank everyone who took the time to share your testimony with us today, and appreciate the thoughtful comments. At this point, I'd like to open it up to the Commission for discussion, and I will start with Commissioner May, and then go in a round robin format using our normal seating order. Please keep your webcams on during the discussion, if you will, and let's start with Commissioner May.
So I think a lot of the concerns about the project came up during the questions, and certainly much came up during the testimony that we heard. I think that there's more to be done in transportation and parking, more to be done to make sure that the building and the parking, whether in structure or in surface parking, is carefully placed and minimizes the impact on the existing environment. I mean, I do understand that, you know, there are concerns about having decided to locate in this place, but I think that, generally speaking, the project is reasonable and that we have to, you know, at this point, our job is to help BEP and the Corps of Engineers make the project the best that it can be and locate it carefully and make sure that we're not overdoing parking or we're not making mistakes in how the parking is placed. I think I'll let others speak more specifically to their concerns about parking. I appreciate the fact that it's a difficult puzzle to solve, because it is the sort of facility that is going to necessitate a substantial amount of single occupancy vehicle use. That's unfortunate, but I'm, you know, I think in some ways unavoidable. But I think, you know, before we reach that conclusion completely and give a final approval, I think that there's more information that we're going to need. So I don't know that I have anything else, looking at my notes, no, and I'm interested in hearing what my fellow Commissioners have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner May. Commissioner Argo.
I'll align myself with the bulk, perhaps all of the comments that Commissioner May just made. I appreciate it. I want to repeat some of those. I really appreciate the time and effort that the individuals who came and came, that's right, they didn't have to go anywhere, this is Zoom, who testified today about their support, and also those who have some concerns about the project. It's very important for us to hear those. I don't have any other comments at this time. Appreciate all the work and also that the staff has done in this, you know, in this project. It's more complicated in some ways than it appears to be initially. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright.
I think I'm going to hold my fire till next time. I need a lot more information. Obviously, my concerns are about the building. There are commissioners who are a lot smarter than me about transportation and parking, but the building, I think, I understand the site analysis, I understand the site selection process. It makes a lot of sense in some ways. And I think the testimony that the building, if not this, then something worse, is probably accurate, but what a sad state of affairs, that that's a criterion for thinking, well, better this than something worse. Oh, gosh, I like to think we're more aspirational. But I will be paying very close attention to the building. The materiality concerns me, the height concerns me, and of course, I know that it's expensive to dig, but I wonder if it isn't worth it. So I'm going to want to know a lot more about the program and why the building has to be 40 feet. And while I appreciate SOM's reduction of the height already, three feet does not elicit a great deal of enthusiasm from me. I think they can, I like to think they can do better, but I don't know enough about the program. So that's what I'm going to be looking for, and I want to repeat. Please bring sections. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Dixon.
I'll be looking forward to the information that Commissioner Wright gets. She's always focused on issues that she's especially locked in on. But I join in with our PD, Mr. Commissioner May, and Commissioner Argo's comments. I just think we ought to make it clear, as always, we hear it, we hear the community, we hear the proponents, and we see them, and I think we'll just continue to gather data as they go forward. It's, I'm sure it'll be fine. It'll be complicated, but fine.
Thank you. Commissioner Cash.
Thanks so much. I just wanted to build on the question I was asking earlier about the parking, because I'm really concerned about the parking here. This is always an issue where an agency is so special that the parking ratio is just not going to work for them. You're in the National Capital Region. These ratios were come up with for a reason, because we can aspire to do that. So I want to reiterate what Commissioner Trueblood mentioned earlier, that I think these numbers with the 884 staff and the need for parking space for each staff when it's split over three shifts, that just kind of leaves me scratching my head, so I'll hope that there could be more questions about that answer next time. But I also want to, in looking at the responses in the EDR, talking about the Making Metro guy out to be the bad guy again, where even though we're only two miles away from a metro, the metro hours just aren't enough. It makes it seem like Metro is some big external entity that the feds have maybe no control over, but I'll just remind folks that the Governors of Maryland, Virginia, and the Mayor of DC reiterated a couple of months ago, they wrote to the President, the incoming President, asking once again, metro is a shared commitment. We know you give us some capital money, but it would be great if you could throw in a little bit of operating money so we can make this work. And I think this is a perfect situation that shows why that should be happening, because the hours, I asked Womata for the historical hours, they pretty much always open at 5:00 a.m., which I've done some runs on the website, and you could get there by 6:30. But if that's just not early enough, feds, maybe throw in a few extra dollars and use your two board members on there to say, maybe we should look at opening up 4:30 in the morning or 4:00 o'clock to actually serve the needs of the region and the federal entities that are here. So I just think that this whole red herring about all these workers come by metro now into the city, and that will be an impossibility. I just don't think there's been enough creative thought here. We have a Greenbelt metro station with massive garages. People can drive there and take the shuttle bus from there if they want. But I think that we really need to get the parking ratio in check at this facility. And then with regard to the parking garage discussion, I was glad to hear there was some discussion, at least looking at some kind of parking structure. I think that could be a really great thing, but to hear the idea that building a parking structure is actually worse for the environment on a carbon footprint basis than doing the surface parking lot just leaves me scratching my head. Like, this is a facility that I thought was supposed to open in 2025. We're going to be well on our way in the next decade to going much more towards electric vehicle fleet for all consumers. So I think that those, these carbon, these carbon arguments that we hear are just getting less and less. So I really encourage the team to go back and look at that parking option again, and maybe on top of that, if we have a parking garage, maybe we could put some EV charging stations in there and actually kind of be ahead of the curve for once with a really big new federal facility that is going to need a lot more cars. But I mean, I just, I'm not persuaded by any of the parking arguments that are in here, and I'd really urge, before we look at this again, to take another look at this, because I just don't think you can transportation management plan your way out of this. Either going to have, you're going to force certain folks to continue taking the metro, which they're doing today, or you're going to have to come up with some other solution that has less of an impact. I mean, we're taking a giant pristine farm field and putting thousands and thousands of surplus parking places on it, but I'm sure in some future master plan will show that they're going to build a building there, but we've seen that's, it's, once the spaces are there, I think it's just tougher to take them away, so it's better to put in the garage on the front end if you can. So that's just my little bit of a rant, but I hope that it will be heard when we come back to talk about the transportation elements of this.
A very thoughtful rant, Commissioner. Thank you. Commissioner Davis.
Thanks, yeah. I don't have much new to add. I just want to echo what Commissioners Dixon, May, and Argo articulated. I really appreciated hearing perspectives from all sides on the issue, and I'm looking forward to hearing additional follow-up information.
Thank you. Commissioner Davenport.
No thoughts at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Trueblood.
Thanks. Well, first, you know, I would also like to reiterate that it's great to hear from the various public witnesses. It helps gives us a little bit of view into what's happening, and I guess I will quickly reprise my lament at the site selection here. It seems like maybe 20th century site selection, based on, you know, I saw in the presentation, you know, there were requirements that I would argue maybe are not as forward-looking as the federal government needs to be, that led us to a site that is not as, not as, that leads us to a site with the problems that we see and that we hear. And I don't know, you know, it's not always NCPC's role in site selection, but I really think we need to encourage thoughtful site selection that aligns with local, regional... think we need to encourage thoughtful site selection that aligns with local, regional, and federal mandates around what we need for our, 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 our region, but also our, our country and the world around climate change. And this site falls short. It's clear, just end of, end of story, but as Commissioner May said, that is that, and so, so it shall be. And so we shall be forced to deal with the implications. And that's why we see the inability to meet guidance around parking, the inability to meet guidance around trees, you know, it feels like, like, really, like it could be 1950. So that is really disappointing. I look forward to seeing the ways that there will be compliance with the policies. I'm actually less interested in, in excuses and justifications and more interested in just, just meet the policies. Meet the policies. Please, just meet the policies. And that is, that I think would get my support. Otherwise, I, you know, that is what you have control over and that is what should be met. And if it's not met, I honestly, I don't, I don't, I don't know what a justification to me would, I just don't know, you know, I don't know. I'm open and I look forward to seeing that, but unless the parking's met, I don't, I don't, I don't know how to support this. So I guess that's my, that's my, that's more of maybe a rant than Commissioner Cash, but maybe it's more of a lament, a lament. That's what that is. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon.
Thank you. I guess when you go last, there's not much more to say, so we'll be short, but I appreciate everybody else's input. I especially appreciate the work from the NCPC staff, Carlton Gray presentation and detailed presentation, and the comments and observations and views of the various public members who testified today with very key issues to bring up. Only thing I'll bring up is as we take a look, as we wait for the TNP to be done and presumably reviewed before it comes back to us for another review. So I'm looking at Carlton's slide here, talks about the opposed ratio, and with the daytime shift of 1,138 people out of 1,427, I would presume the TNP will address that and the stat that how many people today are taking metro to help drive them to a one to two ratio, the 1.2 ratio or one to two, which NCPC requires a site, I think, with between, looking at that harder, taking a look at where people live today and will be commuting from, combined with the appropriate shuttle service from the Green Belt Metro, and frankly, some provision for onsite amenities to support the staff, I don't know why that can't be achievable. Doing that and then combining that with perhaps a parking structure should significantly reduce the impact on the green space and especially, I guess, to the east side, those large trees that we're worried about. So those are only thoughts, only comments I had today. I'm looking forward to seeing this project coming back. Thank you.
Thank you so much. If there are no more comments, I'd, oh, sorry, Commissioner May, you have another comment? Yes.
Thank you very much. Sorry, I don't want to cut in before you wrap up, but, you know, some of the comments started to make me think about the site selection process. And I wonder what, if any, role NCPC or staff may have had when this site selection process was going on. And I wonder if maybe Mr. Hart may be able to talk to that.
Yeah, we were not part of the site selection process. They were, when we first heard this, they, we actually had, they actually had the site. The BEP site was, was it. So it was later on in their process, but in their thinking of the, of the, of the project, and I think Mr. Davis can probably provide some kind of information about that, but if you're interested in it. And it's something that, because this is, this was a congressionally, you know, approved, I guess, transfer, this happened before it got to basically, basically got to NCPC staff. So that transfer happened or was, was, was allowed in the 2018 farm bill. So it was about three years ago. And so, and they had been actually thinking about this, you know, for quite some time. So BEP was, so yeah, it was.
There was, there was work that went into it before it went into the farm bill.
Yeah.
So my question, and this is a question for, it's, for NCPC and what we do and what constitutes planning, is the question of why major federal facilities like this are located without consultation with NCPC? And I can think of one other glaring example where a very bad site selection was made. And of course, Ms. Wright knows which one I'm talking about. And that was, you know, the citing of DHS at St. Elizabeth's, which I know, you know, I'm not, I'm sure there are many on this commission who still support that decision, but it was a very bad decision, and I think it's proven to be a bad decision. And, you know, even, I remember at the time, I mean, I walked in the, in the door after the decision was made, and, you know, it, it was, you know, I still say it was a bad decision, and I know we're never going to, you know, go back and fix that, but, you know, going into the future, shouldn't NCPC be involved in site selection on major, major federal facilities like this? Or say, you know, relocation of FBI headquarters or things like that? I know sometimes, you know, because of the way the law works, it's not in our purview, but, you know, maybe it should be, and maybe we should make the effort to insert ourselves into it.
I don't know if Diane Sullivan wants to respond to this only because it's a larger kind of question.
Or it looks like Director Acosta turned on his camera, so perhaps Director Acosta would like to.
Let me think, let me, let me try to answer part of this. I think you do raise a very good point. I think part of the issue is site selections are coming from a number of different agencies. They're not necessarily all centralized in a place such as like GSA. In some instances, they work together on it. So I think we do need to do a better job of trying to identify or work more closely with individual agencies to see kind of where they're at in their process. And we've actually started this process with a lot of the feds departments, where we've been working with them on master planning. Mrs. Sullivan is in the process right now, trying to catch up with some of the agencies to do that. And actually, I think Diane may be able to answer this too, that we're actually starting up a more aggressive or assertive meet and greet process with some of the master plans that we haven't heard from in a long time. So I think we're aware of, of these issues, but I also think the process is very, to some extent, very decentralized in terms of decision-making and kind of where the ideas might come from. So I think we just have to maybe just do a better job of catching up with each of the agencies on an annual basis to make that determination. I think we've made better progress with DoD, for example, along their projects. So you're saying a lot more master plans come in. Right.
And can I, I just want to add to that. Yeah, so we're about to implement this outreach strategy that we'll be doing every single year over the summer with regard to the upcoming fiscal years with every single agency site out there beyond the District of Columbia. We have frequent, you know, frequently, we work with everyone within the district, but it's less frequent outside in the environs. And so we're going to be doing that, and that's also aligning with the tracking of all the TMPs. So I think we're going to come back to you and just present sort of how we're doing this, this very quick information presentation in the future. And I couldn't agree more. We would love to be more a part of the site selection process and insert ourselves in that.
You know, I see an opportunity not just to sort of insert some controls and good guidance over the process, but if you are in fact going to be working with all of the individual agencies on their upcoming needs, there's an opportunity to be more of a clearinghouse and to, you know, match up agencies that have needs with agencies that have space. So, I mean, I think it's, it's a win-win all the way around if we can just, you know, sort of get to that level of collaboration or force that level of collaboration. And I appreciate everything that you would do to, to, to make that happen. So anyway, I've been talking about, and I know, I'm sure Trueblood would like to speak as well.
Yeah, and Commissioner May, I really appreciate that you brought it up, have some similar thoughts. I think Commissioner Cash had his hand up first, and then we'll go to Commissioner Trueblood. So thank you.
Sorry. Thank you.
That's okay. I was just trying to make sure I was tracking the hands. So Commissioner Cash.
I'll actually defer to Commissioner Trueblood. I think that he had his hand up first. I was on a different thought earlier.
Okay.
And I think I might build on what he's going to say, so.
So Commissioner Trueblood.
Thank you, Commissioner Cash. And I just want to, I agree with you, Commissioner May. You know, it sort of feels, you know, we have these comprehensive plan policies and things, and it feels like we sort of end up, we get wagged by all these other things that happen around site selection and needs before. And the idea that you can do a site selection without thinking about the planning context is, I think, concerning. Director Acosta, the, the point that it's done, it's so decentralized that, that an agency can sort of set whatever parameters they want that may or may not be connected to broader policy goals in the federal government, in the regional, in the region, in localities, I think this is an example of that, right? And it just, you know, I still, as I mentioned at the last, the last time this came up, this is totally disconnected from goals, regional goals that we've come up with at the Transportation Planning Board and Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments. Just like, I, you know, I just, it's, it's, it's like antithetical to them. And so, you know, I think, I would suggest, you know, to your point, Commissioner May, you know, we can't force anything, but at least we can, how, I would love for the commission to think about it, maybe with some of our congressional representatives, to think about how we can be supportive to make sure good planning at least is attempted, at least tries to go into the decision-making. And then at the end of the day, you know, decision, St. Elizabeth's will be decided, how St. Elizabeth's decided by Congress and others who are elected, but at least we can make sure that the, the analysis and the thoughtfulness that I think we bring to the site master planning and all of this, which I think is very helpful and very supportive, you know, very helpful to projects, could be done earlier. And it then makes this process much easier, because then we don't need to fight about as, hopefully, things like parking and trees as much. So, or maybe we do, I don't know. But I, I, I just want to emphatically agree and would love for the commission maybe to think about how we can, you know, support what you're doing, but it maybe even do more.
Commissioner Cash, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, so I was just going to say, I'm surprised this didn't come up. I thought that this was one of our, our third rail issues, but it makes me think of the 60-40 issue that, that's been, I mean, something that we've been thinking about a lot and that the district might not always have the same feeling as, as some other places. But I mean, this is a big chunk of actually manufacturing jobs, which I hadn't thought of it until just now. We were, the district was lambasted about a week and a half ago for having a lack of manufacturing jobs in the district, and here's about 1,000, 1,200 of them that we're, we're going to send away. But I think that if we also have to think about when these decisions are made and they aren't done through a planning context, that we end up with maybe not thinking it through the best way, maybe running afoul of what at least the, the current goal is of having 60% of the workforce in the district. And then I also just want to say, because I wouldn't want to put any of our congressional folks on the spot, but I mean, I was up on the Hill for, for nine and a half years, five of those on the Homeland Security Committee. I was there when St. Elizabeth's, when those kind of decisions were made. And I can just say, from a very high level, I don't think that a lot of those decisions about citing are really thought through in a planning context. My guess would be in the farm bill, this was done, someone probably reached out and said, oh, we have a bunch of lands, if you have someone that wants to go there. I think that when these things happen, when Congress does it, and they are coming and reaching out to us and getting that feedback that we end up in cases like this, because I can tell you, whenever we talked about citing things when I was up on the Hill, even on the Committee of Jurisdiction, these are not the kind of things that we were thinking about. So any outreach, I think that we can do in the future, just to even engage better with, with congressional committees that aren't our direct contacts here, the Oversight and Homeland Security Committee. I think that that's just one of those pieces that we're never going to be able to, to get through when it, when these things are legislated.
If there are no further comments, I'd like to offer a few comments and perhaps a request of the commissioners, because I think what you're pointing out is there are different entry points into these conversations. And I would love it if you would send along to the staff ideas for how we can enter those conversations. I think it's really critical, the, the conversation we just had about how we're mutually reinforcing policies that, that we put forward, that our local and national entities put forward. So I think that's a really important conversation. I also was thinking and listening to the testimony today and thinking about, we're, we're looking at this particular building and its impact in the context of BARK, but we really don't know much about BARK. And so I know there was a request for an informational presentation. I'd like to formally request that USDA come to the commission and just tell us more about BARK. What are the plans for BARK? What is the, the ongoing thought for what's going to happen there? We've heard about demolition of some of the buildings, but it's hard to, for me, to think about the impact of this development on BARK without knowing more about the bigger context. So I'd like to request that we have that before we, we hear more about this particular project. I think it'll, I think it'll help us in our analysis. And I know that's related to not just the parking status and the environmental impacts on the surface or structured parking or the water quality, what have you, but really, it reinforces the conversation we just had about site selection. So if Marcel, if the staff could make that request and follow-up, I would be very appreciative. So if there are no further comments or questions on this item, is there a motion to approve the comments on the concept plans for this project? Are people, do you want to add to the comments or with, you know, the, the idea of having this informational presentation so we have more to respond to before they come back? Or are the comments okay as they are? Commissioner Cash?
I would need to approve the comments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Costa, can you please confirm the motion and the second and take the vote by roll call?
Yes, the motion was made by Commissioner Cash. I believe the second was made by Commissioner Dixon. And with that, Commissioner Trueblood.
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon.
Yes.
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Commissioner Argo.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Excuse me. Commissioner Wright.
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon.
Yes.
Commissioner Cash.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Abstain.
Commissioner Davenport.
Abstain.
Thank you. With two abstentions and the rest affirmed, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Next on the open session is agenda item 8B, Approval of Comments on the Concept Master Plan for U.S. National Arboretum Core Framework Master Plan. And presenting will be Mr. Webb. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Vice Chairperson White. How are you?
Good, thank you.
Okay. Can y'all see the presentation? And is my sound?
Yes, it's good.
Fine. Okay. Thank you. Good afternoon, members of the commission. The United States Department of Agriculture has submitted a concept core framework master plan for the United States National Arboretum in Washington, DC for commission comment. The National Arboretum is a 446-acre research and education facility located two miles from the U.S. Capitol in northeast Washington. The arboretum is bordered by Bladensburg Road to the west, New York Avenue to the north, M Street to the south, and the Anacostia River to the east. Currently, visitor entrances are located on New York Avenue and on R Street. The commission reviewed the most recent National Arboretum Master Plan in 2000, followed by a master plan modification in 2007 to reflect development of the China Garden Complex and Anacostia Waterfront Access Path and decorative security entrances to the arboretum from the Anacostia River. Most recently, the commission reviewed a concept for new perimeter fencing and gates in May of 2019. That project remains in development and will return to the commission for preliminary and final reviews in the future. Today, we are looking at the concept for the arboretum's new master plan. At the concept review for a master plan, the commission should be focused on issues such as, is the concept consistent with NCPC's comprehensive plan and other policies? Is the concept appropriate for the site? And are there any particular unique or complex issues? Before we look at the concept for the new master plan, I would like to share with you some background on the arboretum and provide you with a quick orientation of the facility some background on the arboretum and provide you with a quick orientation of the facility, including pointing out some key features and projects recently reviewed by the Commission. The 446-acre National Arboretum is the premier horticulture research facility of the United States Department of Agriculture. Established by Congress in 1927 and opened to the public in 1959, the arboretum is known for its extensive research and exquisite plant exhibits. The arboretum was listed in the National Register of Historic Places in 1973 and the District of Columbia Inventory of Historic Sites in 1968. Today, visitors to the arboretum may enter either through the New York Avenue Gate from the north, or the R Street Gate from the west. Currently, the larger visitor parking lots are located adjacent to the entrance gates, shown here, circled in blue, with other parkings scattered within the facility, as indicated on this site plan with a P. Visitors also may park in some areas along the roadways within the arboretum. Close to the R Street Gate entrance is the main administrative building complex, and south of the administrative buildings are the Capitol columns located in the Ellipse Meadow. I'll note that the original columns were located in the east portico of the Capitol Building and date to 1828. They were moved to the arboretum in 1984. Here is the location for the proposed China Garden Project that received final approval by the Commission in December of 2016. And finally, we have the Anacostia Riverwalk Trail Pedestrian Bridge that the Commission provided comments on for the concept design back in December of 2017. The arboretum has been operating under a strategic plan since 2013 that identified its core values as discovery, connections, sustainability, service, and access. The strategic plan goals include ensure that the national, ensure the national relevance of the arboretum's research to the Agricultural Research Service, other scientific institutions, stakeholders, and the public, increase the public and stakeholders' awareness of and engagement with the arboretum and its programs, enhance the visitor's experience of the arboretum, and ensure the long-term sustainability for the arboretum. These goals have informed the arboretum's vision statement for the Concept Core Framework Master Plan. Therefore, we support the stated vision, goals, and objectives from the Concept Core Framework Master Plan to reposition and redevelop the arboretum's core landscape to give great expression to its mission to connect people to plants in one of the Capitol's greatest open spaces. In addition, we support the intention to enhance the visitor experience to the arboretum, public engagement of available programs, and efforts to ensure the long-term sustainability of the arboretum. However, we find that additional information is necessary for NCPC's future review of the draft master plan, as well as individual site and building projects, to better understand the implication and impacts of any proposed development. Now, let's look at the concept for the new master plan. It includes changes for vehicular and pedestrian circulation within the arboretum, as well as the construction of new research buildings within the administrative building complex. The plan includes a new circular vehicular patterns within the arboretum based on a tier system, with Tier 1 consisting of a primary drive from the proposed Bladensburg Road Gate leading to the building, the campus arrival at the building complex. Tier 2 consists of a one-way directional lane through the pastoral loop, which would also allow for pillar parking on the sides. And then a third tier consists of service connections, connectors, while the fourth tier is paved trails open to service vehicles. For your reference, here is an image of a typical roadway found within the arboretum today. The plan includes removing 3.29 linear miles of existing road, while 6.61 linear miles of existing road will remain. 2.29 linear miles of new roads are envisioned within this plan. The concept continues to show a new main entrance gate off of Bladensburg Road, which was included in the 2000 Arboretum Master Plan. Although not funded at this time, the new entrance will create a more formal entry to the arboretum and is intended to shift traffic out of the adjacent residential neighborhood. A curb cut has already been constructed as part of the improvements in the Bladensburg right-of-way. Therefore, we support the arboretum's continued intent to construct a new main entrance at Bladensburg Road, as reflected in the 2000 to 2007 plans, and the intention to close the public vehicular access at the other entrances. We note that a new pedestrian access point is proposed along M Street on the south side of the arboretum, requiring additional improvements within the district right-of-way to make the gate accessible, as well as project funding. The right-of-way for this section of M Street is currently unimproved east of Maryland Avenue, as shown in these photographs. It is blocked off by Jersey barriers and would need to be reopened, paved, and lit for bicycle and pedestrian use. Direct public access to the arboretum, previously available from this M Street gate, was closed for operational reasons. Originally, this location was viewed as a convenient and highly visible for traffic traveling along the Baltimore-Washington Parkway, which was planned along the west bank of the Anacostia River at the time. Rather, New York Avenue developed as the main vehicular route into the district from the eastern suburbs, resulting in the diminished use of this gate based on its less convenient location. The interior stone gates at this location were designed in an Art Deco style and constructed in the early 1960s, as this had been envisioned as the main vehicular entry into the arboretum. The reopening of this public pedestrian gate would allow for better neighborhood access to the arboretum's many amenities. Therefore, we request that the arboretum coordinate with the District Department of Transportation on proposed vehicular and pedestrian bicycle access points to the arboretum. And we recommend that they continue to coordinate with the National Park Service in identifying opportunities to connect the trail network from Anacostia Park and the Kennelworth Aquatic Gardens to the arboretum and adjacent neighborhoods. The concept plan provides for approximately 100 staff parking spaces with 180 visitor spaces at the administrative building complex. Satellite lots will provide 135 additional parking spaces with 155 parallel parking spaces along the interior roadways. The site plan indicates a shuttle bus parking lot on the north side of the arboretum. In regards to event parking at the arboretum, the concept proposes 320 spaces in the meadow with an additional 280 parallel parking spaces. The total maximum parking spaces included in this concept plan is 1,170. The applicant has stated that they do not intend to increase parking over what was approved as part of the previous master plan. However, additional information will be necessary to confirm the parking counts and this approach. Therefore, we request, as part of the draft master plan submission, that the applicant should provide information on current and future parking for employees, visitors, and for special events, along with the anticipated changes in staffing over time. The new master plan also includes the construction of new research buildings within the administrative building complex, as well as alterations to existing buildings and structures. For reference, here's a photo of the administration building today, and a photo of the cluster of greenhouses located near the administrative building complex. However, the concept plan is unclear as to how many new buildings will be constructed, or how the existing buildings will be altered, as envisioned in the master plan. Also, projects that I have mentioned and already have received Commission review and approval are not discussed in this concept. As such, we request that the applicant provide the following as part of the draft master plan submission: Identify the perimeter fencing and gates project, which was reviewed as a concept by the Commission in May of 2019, and the China Garden Project, which received its final approval by the Commission in December of 2016. Also, we're asking the applicant to provide information on how many new buildings are proposed under the master plan, as well as alterations or demolitions of current buildings and structures. As I previously mentioned, the arboretum was listed in the National Register of Historic Places in 1973 and is on the District of Columbia's Inventory of Historic Sites listed in 1968. We note that the applicant has selected to fulfill their Section 106 obligations under the National Historic Preservation Act for each individual project envisioned under this Core Framework Master Plan. However, additional information will be needed for the next review of the draft master plan on how historic resources may be impacted by future projects, including the proposed vehicular and pedestrian circulation changes and alterations to existing buildings and facilities. In addition, we request that the applicant coordinate with the District of Columbia State Historic Preservation Office to identify potential adverse effects to historic resources at the arboretum, including any archaeological sites, by future projects envisioned in the master plan. Overall, the concept's goals are consistent with the mission of the arboretum and will support continued visitor access to this beautiful open space within the district. Therefore, it is the Executive Director's recommendation that the Commission comments favorably on the overall approach presented in the Concept Core Framework Master Plan. And finally, that we request that the applicant to coordinate with the District Department of Energy and Environment going forward regarding strategies to address stormwater and flooding in a way that is compatible with the arboretum's mission and character. As I've covered, the rest of the recommendations and requests in my presentation, I'll conclude now, but I'm here to answer any questions the Commission may have. And I'll note that Dr. Richard Olson with the U.S. National Arboretum is also here to answer any questions the Commission may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Are there any questions from the Commissioners? Commissioner Trueblood?
Yes, I just have a quick question, Mr. Webb. Can you pull up the map that shows the connection with the Anacostia Waterfront Trail, you know, across the bridge? And I just want to ask if there's been any thought or consideration around connection on the west side, you know, or how, you know, there is a trail that goes up to RFK, but I didn't, there's kind of a gap, and I just didn't know if there's been a thought, or if we need to be engaged around connecting to kind of over that to M Street, Maryland Avenue area.
Let's see. Tony, if you could pull up slide, I think it's 26 for Commissioner Trueblood, I believe is the one he has referenced. I know Commissioner May, I think, can address the conversations that have occurred about those connections, but I think it'd be helpful we see the slide.
Yeah, there we go. I was trying to quickly look, because I think on the left side, you see the red, right? You see it kind of go up RFK. I guess it, here it goes all the way to Benning. You see the little dot, blue dot that connects to the east side of the river, but, you know, there's a gap there, and I just didn't know if there's been any thought, you know, about going, some of that is the campus of the arboretum. So I just, I didn't know if that's, if that's been considered or discussed at all. I wanted to ask that.
Dr. Olson, before Commissioner May may also want to respond. Do you have anything to add about discussions that have occurred with the arboretum and those connectivity points?
Yes, thank you. That's a, that's a good question, Commissioner. The DOT, I've seen a different map from DOT. They have not discussed in detail with any plans on the Benning Road, north of Benning Road. That's actually mostly National Park Service property and the Langston Golf Course. But the critical answer actually relates to a slide that Lee showed with the abandoned M Street right away, south of our property. So if we're totally on board with conversations with the city about how to get people either through our property, or through there, or with the Park Service, I think the real trick is, there's an opportunity with that abandoned M Street right away, that Maryland Avenue right away, to work there, so.
Thanks. And, yeah, Commissioner May, do you have any, anything, any thoughts on this one?
Yeah, I was also texting to one of my staff who may know more about the broader trail network. You know, the, what I can say is that we are, you know, we're in the process of dealing with the east side. We're now going ahead with the design of that, of the trail connection to the bridge. The bridge itself is at about 70% construction, the, I'm sorry, 70% design, so that'll go to construction relatively soon. And my question actually was going to be, you know, is the, are we still thinking that the, that there will be a direct connection into the arboretum? I know, you know, Dr. Olson, we've met before, and you've been very supportive of making that trail connection from the Anacostia Riverwalk Trail across the bridge. I know there are complications with when your gates are open and things like that, but it's not shown, it wasn't shown in the plans that we saw today for how we get from the bridge up into the arboretum, even though we know there is an existing somewhat improved roadway there.
Yeah, actually, the resolution doesn't show, but that trail roadway is still there. So the trick, as you know, there is, how do you, how do you get from, let's call it the north bank of Hickory Run to the south bank? And we have a bridge on our property that is what DOT or the, just called the city would like to use. And all of that, I think, is possible. I've actually have some ideas, but the crux of the matter becomes what comes first. It's that Maryland M Street dilapidated, you know, abandoned corridor that is going to be the piece of the puzzle. So there are options there. I'm not too particularly worried, and I'll be glad to have, share those in discussions regarding that. But I do believe it's, there are multiple options that are possible.
Okay, thanks. I mean, you know, I think that there was, with the arboretum bridge connection to the Anacostia Riverwalk Trail on the east side, I think there was, there has always been an aspiration to have the connection into the arboretum, and then the connection into the neighborhood as well. And if you know the topography in that area, it's, it's going to be a good, healthy climb to get up to that point, because you get this, you know, it's a real high point. That's one of the great things about that intersection of Maryland and M is the view back to the city and the view back to the dome. And it will be great to have that become a well-used transit corridor for cyclists and hikers and such. So, but I think ultimately, you know, I think the bridge is getting very real very quickly, and we're going to want to make sure that there's a connection directly into the arboretum, at least during the hours when that's feasible from the arboretum's perspective.
Yeah, I shouldn't go on record here, maybe, and get people excited, but, you know, the issue is really, where would a fence lie that could protect our property when we need to?
Right.
But facilitate transit through. And there's nothing that says we have to have a fence on all of our property. There are areas of the property that, if our fence got moved back, that becomes more of a corridor that we maintain, that, that's a total reasonable possibility. So, no, again, very excited. I just want to see, see things get done, and it's going to help us out to address that bridge, I will say, will help us get to the M Street answer.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Any other questions? If not, I'll open it up to the Commission for discussion, and I'll start with Commissioner McMahon, and then go in a round robin format using our normal seating order. So please keep your webcams on for the discussion. And Commissioner McMahon?
Thank you. A great presentation, a great facility, and an important piece of the District of Columbia. Having said that, I have no questions on our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner May, any further comments?
Yeah, actually, I mean, I'm sorry, I actually had another question, which I'd forgotten about. I was just curious about the status of the China Garden, because the last time I had been there, I don't.
Yes, that's, that's a good question. Thanks for that answer, Commissioner May, the, or question. The, I would like to point out that the plan actually accommodates for the China Garden. We don't remove it. We don't necessarily highlight it. As you know, it's been 23 years since that was first mentioned, and we still don't have it. So the idea of this master plan was that it would work independent of whether the China Garden gets built. If you would like If you would like, I am not the point person in ARS to comment on the China Garden. I can direct you to Dr. Simon Liu, the Acting Administrator of ARS, but that's, I can't comment.
Okay. Well, it's, I was just curious, because we had, you know, voted on it four years, five years ago, whatever it was, and I hadn't seen any indication, the times that I've been up there, that, that anything was happening, so I don't know when, you know, when something might happen. But yeah, it's, I mean, I guess I'm glad that it's, that it's still allowed for. You know, in terms of comments, I'm, you know, I'm very glad to see this again and see that there's, there's an update happening, and I hope we will be able to take advantage of this moving forward to make sure that the, that the trail connections that we were just discussing will actually happen. I do have some questions. I'm a little skeptical. I mean, I guess I don't fully understand how transportation will work within the Arboretum when it happens, so I look forward to that being fleshed out a little bit more. There, it's, right now, it's, it's, you know, there are a lot of roads, and there's a lot of parking, and it's spread out so well that you don't really get the sense that there, that there is that much, but you know, there's some very large parking lots there. I'm a little skeptical of the notion that the roads will, that some parking lots would go away, but that parallel parking along the, the existing roads will be introduced as a way of, of allowing parking, but not, not necessarily, you know, having large parking lots. I mean, I'm not a big fan of large parking lots, but I'm not necessarily a big fan of having long lines of cars in that setting. And I think that, at least one of the photographs that was in the presentation that we had received in advance was, you know, was sort of telling the story of how it can be kind of jarring to have, you know, a beautiful lush forest on one side and then just a line of cars on the other. I mean, that's certainly something the Park Service has to deal with in many circumstances, where we don't have enough parking. But I think, you know, small scattered lots along the way, as exist right now, may be as good a solution. But it does sort of depend on the entire, the entire picture and how people will get around and how, how vehicles will be parked. So on that, I think I'm all in favor of the, some of the features, like trying to, you know, finally get done that new entrance on Bladensburg Row. I frequently travel that road in, in, all the time I've lived on the east side of the city, so like 35-plus years I've lived over here, and go out that way on a somewhat frequent basis and have seen, you know, I saw that, that entrance or the curb cut being built with the roadway improvements, and have been longing for an entrance to happen there, because every time you go down whatever street that is to the north where we enter now, it's just, yeah, our street, that's, that's just not a great way to, to get into it. And I think I speak primarily from the perspective of, you know, the people who live along that street and deal with that and deal with the number of cars, cars that come out there, particularly during the heavy seasons, the zodiac season and so on. It's just, it's a lot of, a lot of vehicle on a very narrow road. So I look forward to seeing that, and of course, there's so many other features of the Arboretum that I love. I mean, I love the Bonsai Pavilion and the, and the other modern buildings on the campus. It's, it's a great asset, look forward to it all being improved over time.
Thank you. Thanks, Commissioner May, and thanks for asking about the China Garden. Perhaps Mr. Webb can request an update for us. I think we're all eager to hear how that may move forward. Commissioner Argo.
Noted.
Thank you.
Just a couple of comments. First of all, I'd love a field trip. Okay, I'll just, I will just register that first. Second, the only other thing that jumped out for me, and I, I see, that's what happens when I come behind Peter, because he thinks of everything, and so all my stuff is already covered, the few things that I have. But I, I had a concern also about hearing about parallel parking on the, you know, on the roads, you know, on the internal roads there, which if it has to happen, it has to happen, but I, I think it's not necessarily obstructive, but certainly would have an impact on, I don't, I don't know whether that's a view shed or what it is. Anyway, I, it, I'm not going to say anything other than it doesn't sound compatible with what we might want to be doing at the Arboretum. That was, it was really the only other comment. I, I'm serious about when I say that, about field trip, and I can also take myself out there at, at some point, too. I haven't been in a long time, and I think for some of the things that we're talking about, it would be useful. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright.
Sorry, I have to flip up my laptop. I, I'm not going to add anything to what Mr. May had to say. I, I agree. I think the parking along the street is antithetical to the whole idea of a, and yes, it is a view shed, Linda, and it's not what ought to happen at the Arboretum. We, we fight this all the time on our campuses, because if you're trying to make, I mean, it, it, if you're looking for, oh, never mind, I'm tired. If nothing says, this is not a pastoral setting, like a row of parked cars. I mean, and it's like social trails, people will do that if they've got, just like they'll walk wherever you don't want them to walk, if you don't give them an alternative. So I think it's a completely legit comment, and I have nothing further to add.
Thank you. Commissioner Dixon.
Yeah, I appreciate the presentation and would love a visit back. I used to live about a block from there in the apartment buildings behind it, so I got a chance to go often, but it's a wonderful, wonderful place. And I'm glad, last time I asked about the connection to the golf course, I think I was referencing really the connection that we spoke about today with the bridges and all. Oh, I think it's just wonderful, and I just look forward to seeing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis.
I don't have any additional comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Cash.
No comments. Thanks a lot for the presentation. It's exciting to see the improvements that, that are coming down the way.
Commissioner Davenport.
Nothing to add at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Trueblood.
Thanks. I just want to just agree that this is, you know, such a jewel for our city, our region, and our country, and it's just, just such a wonderful place, as Commissioner May notes, for residents but also for visitors, and so it's good to see this plan. A couple just small things and agreements. Number one, I just want to really emphasize the staff report's recommendation of working with SHIPO early and often. They're, they're, they're nice folks, they don't bite, and they can help make sure that your project is successful. I think there may be times, I know, here where it probably didn't happen as early as it should, and so I just think, talking to us early, especially given the archaeological issues. For those who don't know, DC does have an archaeologist who works in our office, and it's one of the coolest jobs, I think, in DC government, and so obviously for archaeological sites as well. So I really just want to strongly emphasize that piece, reemphasize what was mentioned in, in the report. Also, I'm so, I'm very excited by this M Street connection and the bridge. I would love to see a little bit, and I think, I believe when we actually talked about the, the, when you came before us with the previous fence, I believe we took, I actually saw, I remember seeing somewhere a map that kind of showed that connection, and I would love to see that continue to be worked on, the connection from the Anacostia Trail on the east side to the west side, down to M Street, whatever, however we routed around the city, back to Benning, back to RFK. I, I will offer to help facilitate that. With DDOT, they're doing their Move DC Plan right now, so thinking about how, how this works in, in not, not only to those two connection points through the site, but around, I, I think, actually, I personally believe that psych, biking, cycling around the Arboretum is one of the coolest experiences, in part because it's one of the few places to actually get hills in the city. So I, I want to offer that. We have a group that, that's convened with Office of Planning and Department of Energy and the Environment around Anacostia Waterfront, and we may be able to help coordinate that, especially if it implicates things like DC Public Schools or others on, I think, whatever that 26th Street is. So I want to make that offer, and maybe, we would love to maybe talk to, bring the National Park Service in as well, to maybe coordinate more broadly that. I think it would just, it would just be a really amazing piece to this already wonderful project. So I want to say those, yeah, and I guess that's it. Just as you come back, I would love to see a little bit more of that circulation, maybe both regards to cars, as Commissioner May, but also pedestrians and bikes.
Thank you, Commissioner Trueblood. And I have to say, as always with this Commission, I so appreciate the dialogue that takes place and the offer of support and collaboration, because I do think access and connectivity, you know, in and among the site or in the site, with its neighbors, with the trail network, is really critically important for that to be a viable experience and a safe experience for people. So that's what I would like to add. So with that, is there a motion to approve the comments on the Concept Master Plan?
So move.
Thank you. Commissioner Dixon, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner May. Ms. Caster, can you please confirm the motion and the second and take the vote by roll call?
Sure. The motion was by Commissioner Dixon, the second was by Commissioner May, and with that, Commissioner Trueblood?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Vice Chair White?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Abstain.
And Commissioner Davenport?
Abstain.
All right. Two abstentions and the rest affirmative, so the motion carries.
Thank you. So that covers our action items, and now we have our final agenda item, number 9A, which is an information presentation on transportation data and COVID-19, which I know everyone will be fascinated to, to learn more about as we all experience changes in our world. And Ms. Joanna McCreehan will be introducing the project, followed by a presentation given by Timothy Kanan from the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I just quickly confirm you can hear and see and see the presentation?
Yes. Thank you.
Great, great. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm here to introduce the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments, who will provide an information presentation on transportation data and COVID-19. But before jumping to that presentation, I wanted to quickly provide this timeline related to our comprehensive plan elements and their updates. As you may recall, the transportation element and addendum were adopted in July of 2020. We also created a new transportation management plan monitoring program for applicants and continue to work on that agency outreach. Last month, the Commission decided to delay the federal workplace element update in order to study the potential long-term impacts of federal workplaces post-pandemic. Today, Tim Kanon from COG will share a multi-sector snapshot of regional health, economy, transportation, and environmental impacts. This is not intended to predict future changes, but to provide an overview of what has occurred since the start of the pandemic. Many of the federal elements of the comprehensive plan, in one way or another, may be impacted by the pandemic, and CPC will continue to work with COG to follow this, follow these data assessments of the pandemic and provide applicable updates to policies within the federal elements of the comprehensive plan. With that, I'd like to transition to Tim's presentation. Tim is the Director of Planning, Data, and Research for the National Capital Region Transportation Planning Board at the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments. He has more than 30 years of experience in land use, transportation, and environmental planning, public engagement, research, and policy analysis. Before rejoining COG in 2017, Mr. Kanon held prior posts in the private sector, managing a national practice for environmental planning, as well as previous engagements at COG, Loudoun County and Arlington County, conducting local and regional land use and transportation planning research. I will also be available at the end of Tim's presentation to answer any questions the Commission may have about NCPC's work to date. And with that, I will pass it to Tim. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanna, and thank you for having me, members of the Commission. It's great to be here. Next slide, please. If I can just give a quick overview of the organization where I work, on the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments, for those who don't know, is a membership association of all the local governments in the Washington region. We bring together leaders to discuss major issues concerning of a regional matter within the District of Columbia, suburban Maryland, and northern Virginia, and our membership comprises more than 300 elected officials from 22 local governments. You will notice that our map that indicates the COG membership area is a little bit different than the typical National Capital Region map you may be familiar, more familiar with in a lot of your NCPC deliberations here. Next slide, please. The National Capital Region Transportation Planning Board is housed at COG, and it is the federally designated metropolitan planning organization for the region. We play an important role for, in form for transportation planning, and we prepare long-range transportation plans and programs that are required in order for federal aid transportation funds to flow to and through Metropolitan Washington. Next slide, please. So a little bit about what we've been doing to take a look at the impacts of COVID on the region. You know, since the pandemic broke a year ago here within the Washington region, numerous actions have been taken by all levels of government and businesses to, to contain the pandemic spread of COVID-19 and to mitigate the threat to personal health. And these actions have resulted in constrained ability to move around the region and to conduct socioeconomic activities throughout the region. So we at COG have taken, from various departments here within the Council of Governments, are working together to develop a snapshot summary of what we can observe as far as the impacts go in the Washington region. And we thought it was important to take a multi-sectoral approach at these impacts so we can understand the broader context in which they're occurring. These sectors include health, economy, transportation, and the environment. Next slide, please. This snapshot will provide us, really, just a summary of the impacts, and it's really, while they are empirical, they're intended to provide a general contextual understanding of the impacts, and they're not yet intended to be a deep dive, because a lot of the data that we're using for this are just data that are readily available off the shelf that we can get into. There will be a significant lag in terms of the data that become available for what is occurring during the pandemic period, and as that more detailed data become available, we will intend to take a deeper dive into that. But for now, what we're doing is taking a look at the data, and we're trying to understand what has occurred or what is occurring and what we're observing in the region. And as Joanna said, this is not intended to be a predictive effort in terms of where the direction that we're going. I do have a few slides that I'll be showing that are perceptions of survey respondents that are their ideas of the direction we might be going, but again, these are just survey results. This is really intended to be a snapshot of what we're observing of the impacts. We're really looking at near-term activities. Again, these are the short-term data that are available, and as more data become available, we'll be taking that deeper dive. Next slide, please. So the first sector is health. We have, this is a rather complex chart, but very quickly, the, the area chart that is pink shows the number of cases in the Washington region from March 2020 to, to about March of this year. And on the right side, it shows the number of deaths, and it shows, I think, what we already know intuitively, but I think it's interesting to point out some certain differences here. Within the, the red chart that shows the number of cases, we certainly see the spike of cases that occurred last spring when the region shut down, and then we saw it leveling off to more of a straight line throughout the summer into the fall. And then we heard, of course, throughout the news of this massive spike in the number of cases. I'm not sure whatever, what people really appreciate was how much bigger that spike was in terms of the number of cases in this region than what actually occurred in the very beginning, so it's very notable. Similarly, in terms of death, we saw a very... Similarly, in terms of death, we saw a very, very similar pattern. However, we are seeing an uptick in the number of deaths with respect to the number of cases. That is very concerning. Next slide, please. So what what kind of impact has that had on this region? This chart shows the number of jobs in the Washington area between January of 2019 through January of 2021, a two-year period by month. And as you can see, from January 2019 up to about March of 2020, our region typically hosted about 3.3 million jobs, give or take. And between March and April of 2020, there was a 300 nearly 380,000 decrease in the number of jobs in one month within the Washington region. And over time since then, we have recovered somewhat, adding about 148,000 jobs back. But as you can see, we're still far lower than that straight-line trend that we had been enjoying before the pandemic broke. Next slide, please. So as a result, this slide shows unemployment rates in the Washington area, and it compares it to national unemployment rates as well. The top line, the black line, shows unemployment rates for the watch for the for the country. And the low the bottom line, the blue line, shows unemployment rates for the Washington region. And typically, the Washington region enjoys a comparatively healthier labor market in the region compared to the country as a whole. We typically have lower unemployment rates compared to the nation as a whole. And even during the pandemic period, this was true. But if you see the slope of that black line from March to April 2020, how steep it is with the national unemployment rate increasing to 14.7% in the Washington region, that increased to just under 10%. So while we were certainly feeling it here, it's really important to understand the context in which this is happening throughout the country and certainly throughout the world. Next slide, please. In terms of the sectors that have been hit the most, this slide shows job decreases, job comparing between January 2021 this year to January of 20 of last year, just before the shutdown began. The darker lines show actual employment sectors. The lighter lines are subsectors within some of those larger sectors. And what jumps out right away is the incredible hit that the leisure and hospitality sector has sustained over this past year, being hit hardest of all the sectors. I will point out that there is a slight increase in federal employment between January 2021 and January 2020, and we believe that that is a result of seasonal census workers that were still working to implement the 2020 census. Next slide, please. Looking at the 10 largest metros in the nation, of which we are one, it's important to look at this context, because we are the sixth largest, I believe, in terms of population. However, the number of jobs that we had decreased from us were not were actually comparatively less than some of these other large metropolitan areas. And certainly, you would expect some of the very large metropolitan areas such as Chicago, Los Angeles, and New York to sustain job losses that are greater just because of the magnitude of their economies. We did we did incur job losses that were a little bit mitigated compared to some of our peer metropolitan areas in the country. Next slide, please. In terms of office space within this region, which is a very important driver for our economy, comparing the District of Columbia, suburban Maryland, and Northern Virginia submarkets between the fourth quarter 2019 and the fourth quarter 2020, the lighter blue line shows the vacancy rates for the fourth quarter 2019, and the darker line underneath it shows that for the same period of a year later, just this past year. And you can see that the vacancy rates have gone up in the office market in this region, which has some implications for us to consider. Similarly, on the next slide, retail space has experienced the same type of vacancy increases throughout the region. Next slide, please. An important measure that we look at the our economic activity in this region is air travel. We have three large commercial airports in this region, BWI, Reagan National, and Washington Dulles. We collect data from all three airports and track the number of employments or or people boarding an airplane at each of these three airports, and the blue line shows employments by month for 2019. The orange line shows for 2020. You can see that there was quite the drop-off in in employments between March and April of last year, consistent with a lot of the other data that I have shown. And there's been a slight, but only modest recovery during that time, and air travel is still down significantly compared to pre-pandemic levels. Next slide, please. We did have a survey early in the pandemic period. Every year, our organization's commuter connections program conducts a survey of its employers that participate in this program, which is intended to try to encourage, to support employers, incentivize their workforce to use a form to get to work other than the single occupant vehicle. And while the response rate wasn't that great for this particular survey, because I think they had other things that were important at the time that we asked them, what is notable that 96% of all those employers that we surveyed indicated that they completely shut down or they reduced significantly their onsite operations, either completely or partially, since the pandemic began. So that's 96% of our employers had a smaller presence in their offices during the pandemic. Next slide, please. This part of the same survey, we asked them, well, what are your plans for after the pandemic? And more than half said that while they will they will continue to offer teleworking, but they do not see them going back to the level of low teleworking that they were experiencing before the pandemic. So there's this perception among the employers that we asked at the time that teleworking will probably have a stronger foothold in this region even after the pandemic. Next slide, please. The Transportation Planning Board conducted a survey last fall in support of its update of its long-range transportation plan, Visualized 2045. And we asked area residents how their daily habits have daily travel habits have changed since the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic. 66%, two-thirds, said that their daily travel have changed a lot, and another 20% said some. What's almost notable is only 6% of our total universe that we asked said that their daily travel habits really have been unaffected by COVID-19 pandemic. Next slide, please. So we asked the same people what they what their intentions or what their hope for would be, if given the choice, return to a work location once the pandemic is over, would you prefer to return to the work location full-time, telework full-time, or telework some days and commute to work some days? Those who wanted to telework full-time was 26% or a quarter of those who were surveyed. And then another two-thirds, 65%, said that they wanted to telework some days and commute to work's location some other days. Only 9% wanted to return to locate their work location full-time. Next slide, please. This same survey, we asked about what their commute mode of choice that they use at least once, at least one day a week, before, during, and after the pandemic. And this chart, while there's lots of bars there, groups the individual travel modes by personal vehicle, metro rail, telecommuting, and so on. The darker blue line shows the pre-pandemic level. The orange line shows what has occurred during the pandemic. And then that lighter blue line is their expectations for travel, for commute travel once the pandemic is over. I will call your attention to telecommuting, which is the third group of bars on that chart, where telecommuters, 60% would telecommute at least one day a week. That went up to 60% during the pandemic, with an expectation or perhaps an aspiration from the residents that that would only decrease back down to 33% once the pandemic is over, nowhere close to the the pre-pandemic levels. Next slide, please. And in terms of actual travel impacts that we've observed in the region, this chart shows the amount of travel that has decreased over the month to the equivalent month in in 2020. The first two are January and February. That compares total travel in the region compared to the same month a year ago. We saw that we were traveling in January and February 2020 at greater levels than we were at the same time a year ago. And then as the pandemic hit, travel decreased by nearly 50% in April, with the slow but steady increase and improvement over time. And then we saw that trend begins to reverse again in November and December, which also matches the the number of cases that I showed you early in this presentation and how the number of cases started going up again. There are, we do have other slides about this, I'm not going to show you, but we did break this down to our subareas from the regional core, which is the District of Columbia, Arlington County, and the City of Alexandria. The inner suburbs, which are our big Beltway-oriented communities of Fairfax County, Montgomery County, Prince George's County, and the municipalities and independent cities in those areas. And then the outer counties, that outer ring of jurisdictions that comprise our planning area. And we saw that the travel decreased the most in the central core of the region, and recovered the least in the central core of the region. But nearly in the outer suburbs, we are already back to 85% of travel to pre-pandemic conditions. So we saw a lot of recovery in travel in the outer parts of the jurisdiction, which if if anybody who lives and works within the central core probably does not get out to the outer portions of the jurisdictions of the region and probably don't have the opportunity to observe that. But there are are traffic hotspots in these areas. Next, next slide, please. Similarly, with public transportation, we saw a huge decrease in metro rail and metro bus ridership between March and April, and then a very slow flatline during that time period. It's very tricky to interpret ridership data compared to highway volumes, because decreases in ridership and public transportation can be both a reflection of decreased demand for travel, which is certainly the case on highway travel, but it also reflects decreased supply in terms of service cuts that may have been implemented by transit providers in the region. Metro rail may and metro bus, buses may have come less frequently to somebody. So somebody who relies on metro bus to get to work but depends on more frequent service to get them to work that would make it more convenient, it may have become less convenient during that time. So although metro bus was still available, and somebody may still have wanted to take metro bus, it just may not have been a viable option for them, not not just from a public health concerns that they may have had, but also because of service cuts that may have occurred. Next slide, please. We also took a look at our local transit providers, our local jurisdiction provided bus services, commuter rail, metro bus, looked at them all to see how their ridership was was occurring relative to expected levels when there's not a pandemic. And we saw that the biggest decreases occurred in those commuter-oriented services, such as the Loudoun commuter bus, all of the commuter rail, the DC Circulator. A lot of those really accommodate work-related travel. Some of the other bus systems, the Loudoun Local Bus, the Fairfax Connector, Fredrick Transit, while they were operating at lower levels than what they were experiencing before the pandemic, the decreases were much less, because there was still a lot of non-work travel that was that was demanded and expected and needed for a lot of people in those communities. Next slide, please. Roadway speeds, there's four lines here. They're very much the same, so I'm not going to get into the variations of them, but they show auto and truck travel during the AM and PM peak. And this matches very well with the statistics we're tracking. From January 2020 to March 2020, they were pretty much at an even speeds on the interstates. And speeds went up dramatically once the pandemic hit and and the roadways cleared out because of decreased travel. And then we saw a lot of sustained increased speeds on these facilities during this time period, which has implications for safety as well as travel time. Next slide, please. This next slide shows safety incidents, and each bar includes three indicators. The dark blue portion of each bar at the top are major incidents. The medium-toned blue portion of each bar in the middle are intermediate incidents. And then the bottom part of each bar, which is lighter blue, are the minor incidents. And I do want to call your attention to April 2020, when the pandemic and then the shutdown really went into full effect. And we do see the overall size of that bar did decrease, as you might expect, but what actually decreased was the minor incidents. We still had a pretty much similar number of intermediate and major incidents occurring in the region, so that has some important implications for for safety in the region. The next slide drills down a little bit on that. This is preliminary data, and we only have it for Northern Virginia. We don't have it yet for the District of Columbia or suburban Maryland. But the top two lines compare serious injury crashes in 2019 to 2020. The gold line is the 2019 serious injury crashes, and the darker line are 2020 serious injury crashes. And we're very pleased to see that there were fewer serious injury crashes in 2020 compared to 2019, ostensibly and hopefully because there were lower volumes during that time period. What's very concerning, however, are the bottom two lines. 2019 fatal crashes are shown by the blue line, and 2020 fatal crashes are shown by the orange line. And if you look on a month-to-month basis, there really was very little change, if not no change, between 2019 and 2020 in terms of fatal crashes, even though we experienced such decreases in traffic volumes in the region. So that has very important safety implications. And one one thing I will say about all of the decreased travel in the region, and an important context to remember, is that the decreased travel in the region is not necessarily just a function of people like myself, who was very fortunate to be able to work for an employer that did the kind of work that would allow me to do my work from home and not require me to go to my office. But a lot of the decreases in travel are also reflect the fact that a lot of people lost their jobs, and that human element is something that we can't forget, both in terms of job loss in the region, the economic impacts, and how that has affected households and communities, and certainly as it affects safety as well. There's lots of different things to look at. Next slide, please. So that was sobering, so I'll give a little better news. In terms of the environmental sector, comparing 2019 to 2020, we saw far fewer unhealthy days in the region in 2020 compared to 2019. And a lot of that was driven not only by reduced travel, but also other sectors that we do track that in terms of pollutants that that go into the air in our region. The next slide is an interesting visualization of a similar type of indicator, but includes more criteria pollutants than just PM 2.5. It also shows knots and and all the criteria pollutants that we track. From 2011 to 2020, you can see that the bars near the top for those earlier years have a lot more reds and oranges indicating the poorer healthy days and fewer greens. And over time, you know, we're getting better over time with some of our emissions. But look at 2020, we saw a lot of quote-unquote "green" or "healthy" days in comparison to previous years. So that's a positive benefit that we've been able to enjoy during this pandemic period. Next slide, please. In tracking how much of the reduction each of the contributing sectors make, we do estimate that transportation has resulted in a 40% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. Electricity's about 8% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. And aviation is 65% average reduction in aviation and greenhouse gas. And that, of course, would be borne out by the slide I showed earlier that showed the really significant decrease in employments in the in the region. Next slide, please. So I'm done blasting you with all the data slides, and this is, again, a program that we're working. A lot of my colleagues are collaborating to pull these slides together. I have the the privilege of presenting a lot of other people's hard work, but I do want to recognize that it's just not me doing this. We'll continue to update these slides, and as we're able to take deeper dives at more as more data become available, we will continue to inform our boards and committees and subcommittees, as well as external stakeholders and interested organizations. So if there's ever a time that you want me to come back, I'll be happy to do that in the future. But this concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions along with Joanna.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Kanan, for this presentation, very thorough. Ms. McCreehan, do you have anything you want to add before we open it up for discussion?
I do not. Please go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I will start with Commissioner Dixon, and then we'll go in for a round-robin format using our normal seating order. So Commissioner Dixon?
Yes. First of all, thank you for the voluminous and interesting in data. COG is up to it, its work. I had the honor of serving as for two terms as the Chairman of COG many years ago before, I think, some of you guys were born. But we we I just think it's very important that you do what you do. I do want to point out, though, that the statistics that we offer don't all sort of mask out some of the more challenged communities, because it's a very wholesome, some promising numbers that you look at, but it doesn't really drill down on areas that are hit hardest. The the good, the good, the good stuff sort of covers up some of the real problem areas. So and I know you probably know that. It's too bad we at some point we don't burn it down into that that level to see what that's about. But thank you for what you've done, and keep up the good work, and COG is 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 good. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cash?
I just want to thank you for the the presentation. I think it was very informative, and I'll just say anecdotally, I still walk from the 14th Street corridor from Wilson Building here downtown, about 10 blocks north, and it it was And it was definitely a stark change last March, where it was crickets and you could just walk back and forth. But I really got to say, in the last few months, it's starting to feel like the pre-pandemic already, some of these works have started coming back, and you wonder when the traffic control officers will be back out there. So it'll be very interesting to see how this pans out and what the mix of commercial and office and all that will look like in the future. But I'll definitely miss having the streets to myself as a pedestrian going forward.
Commissioner Davis.
Thanks for the presentation. I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Davenport.
Thank you so much for this presentation. It's really fascinating and definitely something our office is looking at as we're looking to get the federal government to sort of wrap its arms around the best practices and lessons learned in the federal telework program, as it has been forced to expand exponentially and essentially overnight erase all those traditional supervisory and technology barriers that we've had to expand teleparticipation in the federal government. What you could talk a little bit more about, and all of us in the region, definitely those of us who commute into DC from Virginia are familiar with the, that thing we look forward to every year, not the cherry blossoms, but the August commute. And I wonder if the, as folks go back to work and we start to see telework levels at those of which sort of have been, we've been seeking, or we've been striving for for years, to realize, you know, year-round August-level commute patterns, is that something we can hope for as tele gets more and more baked into federal agency and local employer work flexibility plans? Or will we see sort of a comparable level of maybe bailout from public transit in the wake of the pandemic that will mitigate some of those anti-congestion gains? Thank you.
This is where I'll offer an answer that really is, with the responses, I don't know. And I think just so many of us don't know yet, and that those are the questions that are being asked at this time. This presentation really was intended to inform our situational understanding of what has been and is occurring to really better prepare ourselves for what scenario might play out in the future. But it's just difficult to understand exactly what direction is where we are going to go in. And if anybody does know, I really want to know the answers to that as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Trueblood.
Thank you for the presentation. Not, you know, we, as, maybe you don't know this, but I mentioned CAG maybe every meeting, at least every other meeting. So hopefully, I feel like that's part of my job here. But I really appreciate the work. And a couple, I think a couple of things for us to think about as a commission, discussions about the future of the federal workforce in relation to this. You know, it's interesting, your survey asks about employers. Well, the federal government is a major employer and will have decisions to make about what the future of the workforce is, telework, as mentioned by Commissioner Davenport, but also workspaces and footprints. You know, GSA, I know, will be working on these issues. So, you know, and that plays out as we think about our workplace element, also a number of connections with our transportation element of, which I know we recently did, but I think this data is quite helpful for that. I also would just highlight the incredibly important nexus between transportation and climate around climate goals that both are embodied at Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments, at Transportation Planning Board, at the federal government as well. So these come together when we think about things like siting that we discussed, but also parking and transportation options. I know there's, I just saw, for example, another example, Delegate Eleanor Holmes Norton just sent a press release supporting the Southwest Eco District. And so thinking about what that might be as it relates to transportation is important. And then finally, as we read, as we know, there are not going to be as many people in our downtown core 40 hours a week. They're not going to be forced to go there. But how, what is our, what is the future of Central Washington? That, I think, has a nexus with a whole bunch of work that we're doing, but also the NCPC is doing around things like Pennsylvania Avenue. And so I think this, this has a nexus with that, especially when we see that the amount of transportation that has been reduced in the core, and that may not be coming back as it, in the same way that it is in the suburbs. So I think there's a lot for us to digest, a lot that kind of is connected with the work of NCPC, with the work that we're doing in the Office of Planning. And I just appreciate that information. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon.
Thanks. Great presentation. I appreciate it. Certainly, Mr. Trueblood's got a lot of great comments about what the future looks like and what we take, do with this information, very specifically looking at it from my day job here is one of my concerns, is, you know, as we look, is how do we make people feel comfortable about using mass transit again? That's my biggest challenge. More people will come back to work than are there today. We know that's going to happen. And in that process, how do we convince them through our actions and the work we take, working with our mass transit providers, that, hey, it is actually safe to ride a bus, ride a train, it's good to come back and do that, and then start working on some of those environmental issues and energy issues we just talked about. But thanks for the report.
Thank you. Commissioner May.
No, I appreciate getting the report and getting some real data on this instead of, you know, just hearing anecdotally or the selective data that we get, you know, in various news reports. So getting a full picture was very informative. So thank you very much.
Mr. Argo.
I appreciate the report. I was thinking about similar things this morning. I filled up my car, I won't tell you what kind of car I have, this morning with gas, and I could not remember the last time I had been to a gas station. And I, I mean, it's a good thing. And I think we've all had our own personal experiences with how, how the pandemic has affected the way we move, the people we see, how we get there, and appreciate seeing, you know, seeing a lot of that represented in the data that you shared with us. Thank you for your work.
Thank you. And Commissioner Wright.
First of all, Tim, I wanted to say hello. I thought I recognized the voice, and I missed your name, and I had no idea you were at the CAG. So hello.
Hello.
I have a question, or two questions. One, can, I might, I didn't see this in my packet, if it was in there, and I would like to get a copy, as I'm sure a lot of us would, of this deck. If we could get that, that would be great, because this has, yes, GSA is actively engaged in trying to figure out what, you know, the after times look like, you know, from a portfolio perspective, as is every commercial real estate developer everywhere, to figure out what happens next. And I was curious about the size of the survey. How many people did you interview about the teleworking and commuting patterns?
I don't have, we, it was a significantly sufficiently large sample, where it was statistically significant at the regional level, as well as several subregional levels, but not quite down to every single individual jurisdiction. But it was, I can find the actual number for you and follow up, I'll be happy to do that, but I can say that it was sufficiently large to be statistically significant.
Okay, good. Because I think others have already commented on this. We have little slices of data, but this is the biggest, this is the most comprehensive data set that I've seen. And it's good to have it from an objective third party, because every AE firm in the country is cranking out a slide deck every other week, suggesting that they've got, you know, I've said this before, they have the magic beans, and they know, or a crystal ball, and unlike the rest of us, can see into the future. I mean, that, so we're grabbing little legit pieces from here and there, but a big picture like this is, and very specific and not to our region and not generic, will be super helpful. If you could look that up for me, I would really appreciate it, because I think we could really use this.
I'll let it jog out, and then staff can pass it back to you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. And I am so pleased that you asked for a copy, because that was something that I was going to ask for as well. I think it's really instructive to hear the questions and to hear directly from the folks who are using different modes of transportation. I was particularly intrigued with your slide that showed how people use different modes before, during, and what they think they will do afterwards. And I was curious if you could go back to that slide easily, the one about bikes. I noticed that that had an uptick of people thinking they would ride their bikes more after the pandemic, and I was just curious if you, what you had learned about that, is it, do you think it's because people discovered they could ride their bicycles during the pandemic and get to work? But that was just very interesting to me, that what this shows is that more people will ride their bikes after.
That caught our attention, too, and we're trying to better understand what that means, too. But there is the feeling that, you know, people not only just discovered driving their bikes, but also discovered how nice it is not to always be driving their car. And they have discovered their bikes as a recreational and personal activity as opposed to a commute activity, and then may realize that they can now use these active transportation modes to help get them to and from work as well, in addition to the extra time that, you know, many people have been able to enjoy to ride their bikes during this period.
Well, I think it's really fascinating, especially with the introduction of e-bikes, and, you know, different cities are grappling with where e-bikes are allowed to be used, particularly on trail systems. So given our constant battle on looking at transportation management plans and parking ratios, I think having regular check-ins with you as you, as you continue to track this data would be really helpful to us. So thank you for being here today. This was incredibly valuable information. And are there any other additional comments or questions for Mr. Kanan or Ms. McCreehan? Hearing none, I want to thank you both. This was really useful, and you kept everyone's rapt attention as the last agenda item. So even, even more impressive. So thank you for that. This concludes our open session agenda. The commission will meet again on Thursday, May 6, at 1:00 p.m. So if there is no other business to be brought before the commission, the open session is now adjourned.